Okay, we're going to continue with the committee of the whole. Under announcements, there will be an executive session following this committee of the whole for the purpose of discussing personnel issues. We did have two agenda edits, as noted before, 9N to approve the Compass Media quote of[22.34][22.34]$1,400 and 16C, a presentation by Burrow, Burrow, and Mr. Dursa. Is there any other agenda edits? Hearing none. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Seeing none. Superintendent's report.
Okay, tonight, we want to recognize some students. First, the Health Occupations Students of America States Competition winners. And then the next group will be the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America States Competition winners. Megan, please come on down.
She has the certificate if you guys want to watch that. And can we do one group picture or two?
That's it.
Good evening. Our first honoree is Sadiya Rafi. She's BCTC, the Health Occupations Program. For interviewing skills, she won the gold award. And then the next student is Elizabeth Roney, who is also part of the Health Occupations Program for whole health aid. She also received the gold award. Our next honorees were part of the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. The first honoree is Brooke Miller. For early childhood, she won the silver award. Next, we have Ashley LaSalle. For job interview, she also won the silver award. Colin Miller in culinary arts also won the silver award. Then we have Michael Frank from culinary arts, who won the food innovation certificate. And then finally, we have Alyssa Barrows from culinary arts for the PA Page Street Arts Banking Silver Award.
Okay, and last but not least, we have one retirement, Carol Luciano from Layacano. She's been here as special ed secretary for 10 years. She couldn't make it tonight because she's working. She's not very good at retiring. Is there any other kind of public comment on superintendent's report? All right, seeing none. Kurt Loomin instruction.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Kurt Loomin instruction came in on March 21st, and our agenda was very brief. The committee did recommend the purchase of a series of textbooks, and those are included on the agenda for the upcoming voting meeting. Our next meeting will be before the voting meeting, and among April 25th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Building your ground.
We didn't meet last month. I don't think we actually made any decisions on it. There was a number of large lists of items that need to be looked at, and basically was going to come back for the next meeting with some prices, so we could kind of put things in perspective. The next meeting is May 25th at 6:00.
Thank you, Ms. Radowski. Is there any public comment on building your grounds? Seeing none, finance, Mr. Martino.
Yes, Mr. Wolf. There are several items for approval that are devoted on the next voting meeting. But back to the last finance committee meeting, which was held April 7th. And it was actually a long meeting because it was merged with the entire board. So I'll just record the whole meeting. RBC Capital made another presentation refinancing some of our debt at a lower interest rate with a potential savings of more than $3 million. Three votes were held. The first vote was five-four to proceed with refinancing. The second was eight-to-one to use RBC Capital going forward for that refinancing. And the third vote was eight-to-one to spread the savings over five years rather than three. The resolution to effectuate the refinancing was moved on a few minutes ago. There were two unanimous votes taken, one was to approve the Public Disaster Assistance Agreement, and the other was to approve on April 13th Daniel Boone High School AP drawing, student trip to Summerlight Studios in New York City. Both motions passed. Fortnoth Associates made a presentation on the length of tax collection. The board and administration will have to determine whether to utilize Fortnoth, develop a tax amnesty plan, or leave everything status quo with accounting. The RFP status, the custodial maintenance proposal has been received and is being evaluated. The solicitor proposal is almost ready to be sent out. The auditor proposal is being developed, and the transportation proposal is being developed for the fall regarding the transportation proposal, passing current charges for midday bus runs will need to be adjudicated. Staffing, it was noted that the incoming middle school sixth grade class will be more than 40 students less than the current class, which could result in a reduction of teachers. And the number of elementary school teachers required by policy will be determined by the end of May of all, and current numbers indicate a reduction of possibly three teachers. I also ask the administration to conduct desk audits or similar strategies to determine the efficiency of having 17 secretary positions. Curriculum, as you just heard Mr. Kurtz say, the committee was asked to ensure that the business office is supplied with a firm dollar amount of textbook purchases and were assured that that will be forthcoming. And it was mentioned that the high school stadium situation is still very shifting, but improvement is continuing. Facilities, as they relate to finances, Mr. Blank and Bill committed to supplying the business office with written estimates of the next several years. Facility repairs recorded this on for vacation, which I believe starts tomorrow. Mr. Small, did we have those quotes?
Not to this point. I received one roof quote.
They were all emailed a half an hour ago.
Very good, thank you. And on the 2016-17 budget, there are still no solid numbers from Harrisburg for '15-'16, let alone the next year, so the '16-'17 budget won't be finalized until May, utilizing whatever numbers we had that reasonable assumptions. We anticipate additional funds from the state this year and next based on the budget passed by the legislature and enacted without the governor's signature, as well as plan con funds, which are still in limbo but should be forthcoming. Other savings that could be incorporated into the 2016-17 budget include the results of the RFPs, bond refinancing, staffing reductions, the length of tax collection, and potential vehicular equipment sales. A budget presentation will be made to the public in a meeting, of which meeting date is not yet been finalized. And I closed my portion of the meeting with a prepared statement on debt and taxes, which I'll summarize with the public impressed. I just talked about how we got into the debt that we have with all the building construction that took place in the first 10 years of the century. And when all said and done, the district will have repaid over $100 million in principal and interest because of that spending. If we're going to reduce that debt through refinancing, the first consideration in my mind should be to the people that are paying back the debt, that's the taxpayers. The debt's their money, not ours, and the savings should not be used for additional spending or to enrich already substantial labor contracts. The only additional spending that should be useful would be for unfunded facility repairs because they have to be done, and we don't need to be borrowing more money. I then talked about what the administration's done, and they've done several things to improve education opportunities, be it expanded curriculum, collegiate partnerships, development of full-day efforts kindergarten, and we need to do our part to balance that by looking at our tax rate and only tax is absolutely necessary. The next finance committee meeting, and if the finance committee members could give me an answer tonight, it's scheduled for Thursday, May 5th. Mr. Small has a conflict and is asked if we could possibly do it on C, May 4th. Let me know after the meeting, please, so Mrs. Kramer can advertise that. And one last financial thing, I received a thing from PSBA today, that there's an advanced school finance session for interested board members. It's free to attend. If you're interested, let me know, and I'll email the information to you. It's a one-day session on proper fund classification using fund accounting models and debt structuring options. So if anyone's interested, let me know after the meeting. That's it, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Is there any public comment on any of the items under finance?
I have a question about item 9G, just a question for the administration. This is about some equipment quote for $2,500, some parts of graduation. We have this every year, and I think it's good we do something because the acoustics at that stadium, with the system that was included, are not up to par. My question is, have we looked about the purchase of the equipment on our own because it's sort of paying $2,500 every year? If we have it on our own, if we have that, and we use it whenever, I don't know what that cost would be, some of it is going to be less than the cost to rent each year. Have we taken that?
No, I'll make a note. Thanks. Also, Mr. Wolf, one quick question, I asked Mr. Martino as well. So under 9E, we had a discussion about we're going to contract for our other layer, our special needs category, so does that would take an RFP or does that would have an RFP? Is that not included?
I have no idea what Sweet Stevens has to win. They're special education. So do we need an RFP for that?
The RFP that I'm working on is for General Kelsey. Just random, that's it, it's on here for approval.
Do we know when their contracts expire?
They're both in.
Do you imperative? That's something else we need to decide soon. Do we need to, do we just want to continue with them?
As I was mentioning, I have a feeling it's going to be so specialized in what their focus is. I don't know how many players are out there, and Kelsey probably has an idea, but that's seems like a pretty select group of people to specialize in something like that. But it is, can't hurt to send it out for RFP and see who else is out there. Any other questions on finance?
Question, I'd say we're proving it for scrap? Weight room equipment to be scrapped?
Surplus, so that it can either be sold or scrapped, just so that we could dispose of it in the best way.
If you saw the attachment, some of the cables on the equipment are frayed and probably not safe, and it's probably something that...
I saw the equipment the other day. It's been well-worn.
Yeah, it looks pretty beat up, but I'm just curious what we're doing with it, scrapping, recycling. So it could generate some revenue for the amount?
It could, yes.
It could help create a new fan or something? Okay.
Okay, if there's no other comment, no...
In the case of what's being discussed here, probably if it's going to be sold, it would have to be sold with a disclaimer where insurance carriers would obviously saw it scrapped, disposed of it. It's kind of like trying to sell a trampoline. Anything other than just straight-out weight, anything that mechanical in nature, I would imagine, Mr. Blank and Bill, you would disable all that before rendering it useless?
Yeah. Just waiting for them to get all this together and what we're doing with it, and then we want to take everything apart for them.
Okay. All right, is there no other public comment?
Well, there you go, 367 Buckhead. I just wanted to clarify towards equipment. The thought process is to scrap it because it is not usable in a safe manner if we were to sell it to somebody. We don't have that liability. The thought process is to scrap metal it, and whatever income should come in, use it to purchase other things for the weight room. For example, the industrial man, I don't know if anybody's ever been in that room in the summer, you want lots of fans for multiple reasons, so be able to at least put that money towards purchasing something like that or whatever else might be needed in the room.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reno. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Presentation by board members. Mr. Martino, is there any secretaries' correspondence?
No, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Berks County Air Media Unit, report.
Yes, Mr. Wolf. So in our March meeting, a few things. First, in the IU news link, it's a nice picture of our lady building team, which little school did when they had STEM design on Thursday building. The IU, we approved some new internet services as far as speed of communications. Seems that they're, you know, sure as good as masses, those seem to get a lot more speed for less money these days, so except for services, service electric is for a pay more now. We also approved new descriptions for floating subs. The IU is, like every other district, having issues finding some new teachers, so the process here is that we plan on hiring some permanent floating subs at the IU for stamping needs. Their needs probably average about 20 teachers a day, so it's very hard to stamp that. And I think as Mr. McMike put it out into call and also online, we did ratify the NSA for the start talk with the Mandarin Chinese program, which has been going on for a few years now, so I think it's the first time I recall seeing Boom pushing that, so thank you for that, I guess.
Thank Mr. Harris.
Thank Mr. Harris.
Very good.
Thank Mr. Harris. So, yeah, obviously, put two and two together, NSA, Mandarin Chinese, kind of makes a sense there, I guess, so, but all good stuff. So that's what we have.
Thank you, Ms. Radowski. Any questions for Ms. Radowski? Berks Career Technology Board update, Ms. Radowski?
Thank you. We did meet the last Wednesday in March, this last month, we toured the dental program, and this student showed us, one student showed us how to do Henry digital x-rays. One of the girls did an impression, did some impression on somebody, and then they also showed us how they wanted to set up the different trades for dentists. So the, one of the seniors that was showing us the x-rays was going on to college and had gotten a scholarship to move on. They, this was just, they were, the students were very excited, and they did a great job and they could come out of school, even in BCTC, and get a job in dental office if they wanted to. So some of the things we talked about, the Berks County Workforce Development Grant was received by BCTC in an amount of $30,000, and that money is for manufacturing healthcare students that were accepted into the 2016-17 program, will be participating in a shadow bay, and they will take the kids out to tour some manufacturing facilities. And then they're also going to run two summer camps in the manufacturing and healthcare fields with 45 students that are eighth- and ninth graders that are interested in performing in the summer so that they can get exposed to those careers. It talked about coming up with a fiscal contingency plan, and what will BCTC do if districts could make payments in going into the future if we have continuing budget issues like we had this year. And so they want to try to come up with a plan of how they will curtail expenditures going into the year if that became a problem. It talked about the rebranding of BCTC, and they are undergoing a rebranding program, but they put that on hold for a little bit because one of the steps in that was a, they wanted to do a survey of stakeholders, and they got a proposal for that. It was, it was like $17,000 or something. So they were going to re-group and see if there's another way that they can do that survey without that cost. And then lastly, they added two new math door enrollment courses for 2016-17 in conjunction with Frank.
Thank you, Ms. Radowski.
And I did mention that we were a little bit unhappy with the amount of money they took from the, their surplus for the pension. I passed that along, and they did say that they will relook at that every year, but even though the pension kind of spikes and then goes into a holding pattern, they don't really have the ability to generate more revenue, and since the increase was so small this year, they didn't want to take a whole lot out because they thought they didn't want to have to have future higher increases, so they're trying to level it out. But I did catch that a lot.
Any questions for Ms. Radowski? What does rebranding mean? What do they mean? Change the name instead of career technology?
Well, I think the logo and how they market, market things, so I think what, almost like when you hear BCTC, or I don't want to get away from that old Votek stereotype, but try to have more of a positive connotation, so I think they're trying to figure out how to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Martino, legislative report?
Yes, starting at the top, the US Supreme Court split 4-4 on repealing fair share work rules, which enable labor unions to force employees to pay at least a portion of union dues. Because of the tie, owed fair share remains in effect, and it very well may come before the Supreme Court again once the ninth seat is filled. Governor Wolf allowed the 2015-16 budget to be enacted without his signature, but vetoed the fiscal code, which included the bipartisan legislature funding formula for distribution of funds to school districts. He's now intending to distribute funds allocated in that budget according to his own personal formula, as opposed to that passed by the legislature. In obvious political ploy, this formula allocates 50% of the new funds to Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Chester-upland, and Wilkinsburg, 428 school districts, or 85% of the total districts. And Pennsylvania had less funding than under the formula passed by the legislature. This very possibly will be decided in the courts. The legislature is currently focusing primarily on the April 26 primary election and social issues, so seemingly won't get back to working on the remains of this year's budget or working on finalizing next year's until at least May. Darrell Schaefer, a PSBA official, sent an email advising that the veto of the fiscal code also means no relief for district owed plan con reimbursement. Danny Boone School District is one of those districts. Will get the money eventually, but it's legally owed to us now. Mr. Schaefer suggested everyone, board members, administrators, employees, and taxpayers alike, write, email, and or phone your respective state senator and representative to let them know how much we are owed and how important it is that these funds be released immediately. Danny Boone School District is owed $740,000 this year and $90 million over the next 15 years. So it impacts our budget tremendously. And lastly, just a reminder, April 26 is primary election day in Pennsylvania, and we encourage everyone to vote regardless of party affiliation or candidate preference. That is the report.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Is there any questions for Ms. Martino? Seeing none. On other reports, we're expecting a Blazer Foundation update tonight. However, shortly before this meeting, I was informed that Ms. Miller had a death in the family, so she's not able to attend, so we'll go ahead and reschedule that.
I have a copy of the information that she was going to share.
You can present it. I mean, I think at some point, we still want, I still want to know what she looks like and hear her to a presentation. Thank you, Ms. Ousmane.
Sure. So the Blazer Foundation update, as Mr. Wolf just indicated, Michelle Miller was hired in December to serve as the executive director of the Blazer Foundation, replacing Stephanie Conlin. Their 25 Days of Christmas event, the net profit was down about 25% from last year due to reduced participation. Announcing daily winners on a dedicated Facebook page proved to be popular among the participants. Their update on the Danny Boone Middle School Greenhouse says that all the required equipment has been received, and they're now seeking bids for the concrete pad. They are currently planning a Blazer Days Carnival for sometime this summer as a fundraising event for multiple parent groups. They are also working with the Danny Boone High School Guidance Department to try and determine if they can be the long-term host for the scholarship ceremony at the high school. They also have a grant sponsored by the foundation, which has been submitted to the Pottstown Health Wellness Center to provide an outdoor learning area behind AEC. That's the nature trail that we've heard about recently, and that grant is being coordinated by Jennifer DeMile. And that's all the information that I have from the board with Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Ms. Ousmane. Is there any questions? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on any of the items by presentations by board members? Seeing none. Under 11 personnel, there's a few items listed there, some transfers, foster clearances and so forth. Is there any board questions? Hearing none. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Programs. You'll see attached to nine is the monthly enrollment, student data report. Okay, item 13, policy, Mrs. Bates.
Yes, the policy that you committee met this evening and got much accomplished. We moved, we moved a whole batch of special education policies through to the full board that'll be coming up. We're also moving along the policy that the administration would like to see structured to administer. Obtain, maintain, and administer doses of an opioid antagonist for emergency use to assist the student, staff member, or other individual believed to be experiencing an opioid overdose. Specifically, it's called OXO. It's in-house. Our staff has been trained on it. It's administered something like an EpiPen. Cannot be put in use until the board approves the policy. There are reasons for wanting it. It are simple. Most school districts are adopting it. It's free from the state. It's a simple, single injection. Cannot be overdosed. There is inducing problems to work out in the emergency. And it would be akin to the liability, it would be liability because it'd be akin to the AED, the federal leaders might administer in a life-saving situation. So, most of the committee was in agreement to move it forward to the full board for discussion. There's much paperwork that will be provided to the board when the discussion, when it comes up on the agenda for discussion. Some of the discern, concerns discussed was would it be an incentive for the students to do something foolish, knowing that they can get out of it, and just liability issues. But we were sure that it really weren't, shouldn't be a liability concern. So, that's where we're at. And that concludes my report. Ms. Pearson.
Your next meeting is May 9?
Correct. Thank you.
Chief, do you, do you carry these kits with, with your troops?
Yes, sir, we do.
I'm wondering if Burbsboro does as well. I'm not sure.
I can, they're going to be, the police department in Burbsboro is going to begin doing that. They, there's a possibility of someone being a first responder to an overdose situation actually ingesting the material themselves and need it depending upon maybe what medications they're on and whatever. So, that's sort of like swayed it in regards to the chief there and, you know, and the officers. The concerns that you mentioned were, were some of the same, you know, concerns where it's a backdoor out, you know, or, or whatever. I, personally, I think if you can tell someone's life, you should give them every chance that you can.
We have in fact used it. There was an occasion about three weeks ago, there was a young man who had overdosed in the Wawa on 4/22. Officer went out, he was in unconscious state and actually in some cases reverses the unconscious state. It doesn't affect anybody if they're under the influence of an alternative type of drug. Just attacks the receptors, counter accyde receptors pertaining to the opiate. It's, it's very effective and it'll save lives, quite frankly.
My, my one, I shouldn't call it concern is, you know, we, we asked the busing company to voluntarily carry the EpiPen to allow their drivers to administer that in case there is an allergic reaction. And, you know, of course they, they refused to do that for legal reasons. So, that's, I guess that would be the biggest point is to make sure that we're covering the person as long as they're acting within their, you know, their training or whatever, that they're, they would be protected and feel totally, totally fine with helping someone.
Does that have a question? Maybe since the chief is here, he could respond to it. My only concern, and I've heard that sometimes when it's used, when they come out of, when they come back to consciousness or cannot take, they can get combative. And so, my concern is more for the safety of our people. I mean, obviously if it's a police officer, they're trained to deal with combative, it's an ambulance, they usually have an officer on the scene. If it's the school nurse, you know, I don't know our school, but you know, if you have a five foot four, 120 pound school nurse and she administers this and all of a sudden somebody gets combative, you know, it's, it's out of problem. So, that'd be my only concern.
It is in fact. It's happened. I mean, we're pretty much turning off their high. So, that could be an issue. That should, that would be something I would take into consideration, especially if the person that's under the influence outweighs the person that's administering it or, there's always a risk, there's always a chance. But I think in, in this particular case, at least opinion, I mean, the risk outweighs the means. I mean, we're, we're saving lives. If in fact you feel that there's going to be an issue or there's a confrontation, just contact 911. We'll get here as fast as we possibly can.
I mean, maybe too many.
As opposed to the alternative, I think it's, it probably outweighs it.
I don't know what the policy says, but maybe there's always somebody, you know, it's another adult right there.
We'll look at that closely, this concern.
It's likely if this happens, that this will, you know, most likely happen at the high school. And that's covered by the state police. So...
Is there a policy when it could be administered, 911, if you call, maybe after or at some point, is there a requirement for using all of it?
The entire board will get a copy, the entire board will get a copy of the documentation that was provided to the committee for the next policy agenda, which you called me to.
Well, may, may be helpful to reach out to resources here that already have some experience and provide some, some valuable input.
We, we have them, it's in our schools today.
The medication is already in the schools, but it cannot be used until the policies are passed. And the nurses have been trained and we followed every step.
The whole state.
This is the last step.
I mean, are we open for liability for not using it if we have it?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I think we're open to liability for everything.
I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah, probably. If we have it, then we don't use it.
Is this a PSBA recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Did we get a, any type of deadline when they're going to have our next round of policies to review?
They were out this past meeting.
Sorry?
They were forwarded to Mrs. Bates.
So, we just got them?
They did, yeah.
The 202?
I mean, now when I thought we should have fast track.
Yeah, oh, definitely. Oh, yes. Okay. I look forward to seeing your work. Thank you. Very good. Is there any public comment? Is it related to policy?
About the public, we just need...
Then please, please sign in and state your name.
My name is Kara Springer. I'm 733 Nicholson Avenue. And just about administering the medication and the, the set of vitamins. Are our teachers, all of them certified in CDI training or just special ed teachers? What is the protocol for that, on a day training and how to deal with a vitamin student?
Well, special ed, special ed, yes, but the teachers would not, the teachers would not be administering the drug.
Right, right. But I'm just, I guess that just triggered the thought in my head. Are our educators trained, CDI trained, at least some in each building, by a behavior specialist?
Some are.
Some, okay. And at each level or just at the school level?
Some are. I mean, I don't know every level.
That, I, that's just something that I would like to put before the board that I think is important, that if a child does become aggressive, I think an educator should be trained on how to deal with them.
Right, safely.
And...
Yep.
Jennifer Harding, 103 Lawson Drive. I know you guys, this is a hard decision for me. I had a cousin die of a heroin overdose. He was 17. He didn't like it, gave it to graduation. It was a very hard year. I was in for it. But, yeah, it was a hard time, so please, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for your loss.
John Siri, 501 Main Road Street. This is why I'm here tonight. We have security ties, we're the best. Would they not be able to help?
Yes.
When they come out of it?
Yes, they could.
I also want things to know, in service days, are teachers somewhat trained what to look for in addition to the different drugs?
The teachers aren't experts in...
No, no. I just want to know if they would know, maybe you could educate them a little bit on what to look for in different drugs.
Well, I know teachers look for signs and staff, they're, they're trained to look for inconsistencies in behavior, mood swings, things like that, and then that's reported to the proper...
I'm the mother of an aunt who passed away seven years ago. And I'm very involved. There was a bill signed to a mortgage tenant. The school is responsible for some things. I would like to see, maybe you have, and see if parents are interested, have meetings at night to educate parents on things to look for. It starts very simple. Call medicine and a medic pack. It, it's bad. It's very bad. And you could get care in foundation, people speak for free, without cost, they don't even anything. A lot of schools are doing that to educate parents. Yeah. And shy. It's wonderful. It is. I mean, I've seen it used and, yeah, they come out and they jump because they're almost dead and then they jump. They're starving. But you have security and to save a student's life, I think it's important. I really do. And I'm here for a meeting with us on Thursday night, negotiations.
Is there any other public comment? Transportation, Mr. Ocasio.
We had a transportation committee meeting on March 22nd, at which time we went through the current version of the RFP that had been prepared by Mr. Small. We discussed as a, as a committee, what we thought, what we liked that was in the RFP, things that we thought might be different or that we might want to include that weren't. In the current version of the RFP, we are meeting on the April 26th, Tuesday, after the voting meeting, to go over the RFP again with the hope that we'll have the RFP ready to go in May. I believe that the timeline at this point is to have the mandatory pre-bid meeting scheduled for May 19th and that we will be asking for return proposals by June 1st so that we will know in advance of next year what the cost of the, of the new, what the new transportation cost will be effectively. So, if anyone's interested in finding out specifically what we are including in the RFP, you're obviously welcome to come up for a meeting on the 26th.
Thank you, Ms. Ocasio. Or is there any questions? Any public comment on transportation? I'm seeing none. Under Old Business, the action list, once, at some point, Mr. Martino has mentioned that we're going to have to have a board, a budget presentation with whatever numbers we have available. You know, Mr. Small's been working towards that end. Also, the PowerPoint showing pie chart of district expenses. That data is to determine whether that's going to be released. The spring newsletter costs and feedback.
Can I, can I comment on, on the budget presentation?
Sure.
I believe we have to give the public 30 days before it's finalized. Looking at the calendar, if we waited until the May 23 voting session, it's only 28 days until the June voting session. So, we almost have to do it on May 9th. May 9th, so I would suggest if we get, do you believe we got it ready by May 9? And Mr. Wolf, I suggest we have that May 9 meeting in the middle school because of the screen and, you know, public development or whatever.
Okay.
And that would take care of the budget presentation and the PowerPoint pie chart.
Okay.
The spring newsletter, I did give Mr. Small US Postal Service regulations on addressing, which I think could save us quite a bit of money using a postal customer local address instead of individual addresses and mailing it out at a nonprofit rate instead of how it was mailed last time, which I think that was one of the bigger expenses of the newsletter was the mailing cost.
So, as, what would be, any idea of what that savings would be?
I think the postage cost would probably be at, at least two-thirds less. So, I mean, I haven't computed it, but... That and we were going to look at, at the BCTC doing the printing possibly.
I think the discussion was the IU as well.
It was the IU.
So, once we get the initial format in place that it can be, we'll then get an idea of the cost of printing. I think that was the, the issue with the last issue, it's the format in which it was developed. There's not everyone can use that format, so we need to work, it'd be, it'd be better if we could have the IU or the Career Technology Center do it since we're essentially paying it itself in effect, so it'd be a lot better to manage it. Either one of those two or both of those organizations if they came and run it. Okay. Is there, oh, the last item on there is to approve the minutes for the March 14th committee of the whole and the special voting meeting. Is there any board questions? Any public comment on Old Business? Okay, under New Business, we're going to approve a trip for the music department students. Move to item B. Do you want to do that, President K? I wonder if I can use one of these, can I use one of these lights?
Absolutely.
For this move a little bit. Over there. I know, it's like a... It's like a love.
Good evening. I'm Jim Thompson. I'm the president of Thompson Associates. We do educational facility planners, planning for Pennsylvania school districts, like yours, doing district-wide studies. The plan tonight, this is the second public dialogue, and it is related to the presentation of options. We did a community forum on February 25th, and we termed that the Foundation of Knowledge Tonight for our presentation. I would like to just go back to make sure everybody has at least a little refresher from our last presentation that talks about how we got here, what are the major school district issues. Number two is enrollment projections versus school capacities. A lot of the savings that's possible in the district is related to enrollment versus capacity and the condition of the existing buildings. Then we're going to review four options and finish up with a recommendation from the administration. I consolidated the major district issues. We talked a lot at the first community forum. We spoke quite a bit about trends in education, but to boil out what are the major issues first, our financial. Costs are rising at a rapid pace, both for PESRs, which is the pension cost for the school district, and medical insurance costs. Those are rising much faster than the revenues. The revenues, in fact, for the district remain flat. And as your board reports noted, the state, as much as they seem to want to increase revenues to the school districts, the reality is not matching up to some of the hype from Harrisburg. So, revenues remain flat for the district. So, it creates a financial pinch for school district planners. The three criteria that we found during the course of our study of school capacity and enrollment, the current school capacity exceeds the current enrollment. There are many more students could fit into your existing buildings today. Not only that, but your projected enrollment has been declining for about the last three or four years and is projected to continue to decline on about the same trajectory for the next four years. And your facilities need future renovations. Just a little refresher on enrollment versus capacity. This red curve shows the last several years of enrollment in the district. From the left-hand side, since 1999, enrollment had been increasing, and this was the period of growth and construction in the district. Several of the facilities that are in use today, where in fact, constructed during that time period, Amity, Monocacy, the middle school, all three were constructed during this growth period. From about 2006 until 2010, the enrollment leveled off, and that corresponds with the downturn in the real estate business nationwide and here in particular. Many of the approved lots in your school district have not been sold, have not been developed. So, there's still quite a bit of land out there, but it is not currently slated for development. And in fact, with some of the changes in demographics, is beginning in about 2010, 2011, your school district has been seeing a gradual decline in enrollment. The green line is where we are today. So, you can see, there's an orange line at the top that is the rated capacity. Our firm rated the total capacity for students in the district K to 12 at 4294. So, you can see, we're sort of falling away from that line. And as we get farther and farther from that line, it means that there are more and more chairs that could be filled by students. To, a refresher on the K to 5 school capacity, we only count regular classrooms in the elementary schools. And when we look at the capacity of a classroom, the board has policies that the youngest children have less students per classroom than the older students. So, it takes less sections for fourth and fifth grade for the same number of kids as the kindergarten is 18 to 22 students, less kids per section. So, when we look at the total, this is the total of K to 5, again, this is a review. There are three buildings that are K to 5. Amity is a K to 5 building, is, we rate the capacity, is 730 students currently enrolled, 621. And we've identified seven full-size classrooms in that building that are used not for capacity but for special education and pupil support services. Monocacy is, has a capacity of 560 students, a current enrollment of 386. And there are six full-size classrooms that are dedicated to special education and pupil support services. Birdsboro has a capacity of 556 and a current enrollment of 409. So, you can see that there, all of these schools have a little bit of excess capacity in each of them. Birdsboro has five full-size classrooms. Birdsboro is distinguished from the other two, and then it has quite a few seminar-sized spaces. So, the five full-size classrooms are supplemented by numerous seminar-sized spaces. So, there are really lots of spaces for special attention, for special ed and pupil support services. And all of your schools are well-managed and well-run in that regard. Total enrollment, if you take the sum of all enrollment K to 5 in the district, is 1,416 students. We rated the total capacity at 1,846. That is a difference of 430 students. Over the next four years, the enrollment projection is for this to increase in excess capacity from 430 to 645. So, this, this starts to suggest that there are enough excess students here over the next four years to consider a consolidation. Condition of the buildings, all of these buildings are in good to excellent conditions. Distinguished, Amity is in good to excellent condition, but there are some roof replacement issues and some masonry restoration. Notice that this building was built in 2002. So, over the course of the next six to 10 years, some of the mechanical equipment in these buildings, it has a large number of heat pumps in the building, and these are due for replacements. So, we're going to have to start looking at some mechanical equipment replacement for compressors and the like. Birdsboro was a little bit older. It was built in 1989. It is in good to fair condition. The major renovation costs in this building, the doors and hardware in the building are still pre-Americans with disability act, so the doors and hardware are not accessible. The stairway towers need some work on the doors and the hardware. The mechanical systems in the building, this one is coming due for unit ventilator replacement. The controls, automatic temperature controls in this building are still the old pneumatic style. So, at the time, we do the unit ventilator replacement and upgrade the mechanical systems. We should upgrade the automatic temperature control and get the efficiencies of a modern system. There are some masonry restoration projects, and a significant amount of paving repair or replacement in the parking lots here. Monocacy is practically new. There are some odds and ends in the building. You'll notice around the building, there's quite a bit of mildew that's formed on the rough masonry that should be cleaned over time to keep the grout from deteriorating. And then there are some water issues in the site walkways and pavings that need to be repaired. This one's in like, excellent, like-new condition. The middle school, we rate capacity in a secondary school a little bit differently. We count both regular education classrooms and special subjects. The classroom capacity, when we rated the capacity, we used 25 students as an average. You'll recall that the board approved maximum for these classrooms is actually 30 students. That's a lot for these classrooms. Thirty students is a lot of kids. The utilization rate for this middle school is 77.2%. We get that utilization rate as a measure of how effectively an individual classroom can be scheduled. And so, in an elementary school, kids are out of the classroom a significant amount of time for special subjects. At the middle school, because we count special subjects, this utilization rate, if the room is not being used, then, if we were looking at the high school, for example, we could share those classrooms on a schedule. It's very difficult to share classrooms in a middle school on a schedule because there are not a lot of elective subjects that could fit in on a schedule to a regular classroom. The current enrollment is 867. That is about 86% of the rating capacity of 1,003. The difference is 136 students. Over the next four years, we see that number of excess students increasing to 280. So, there's excess capacity at the elementary, there's excess capacity at the middle. The building condition, it's not as new as Monocacy, it's not as old as Amity. There are some masonry restoration. You can see the retaining walls that face the street. There is some masonry deterioration that needs to be addressed. There is some paving and walkway repairs. But the chunk of the money from six to 10 years is, we're also in this building, we're looking at starting to do compressor replacements in the building over the next six to 10 years will require some mechanical upgrades, even though the building is beautiful and new. High school, the capacity is rated very similarly to the middle school classroom capacity. We use 25 students average, but again, the board has a policy that these students per classroom can float up to 30 students. The current utilization rate in the building is 75%. That can be pushed up to 85%. And in fact, before the middle school moved out of the building, the utilization rate was at 85% and above because the teachers commonly shared classrooms, there were teachers on carts. This building actually has instructional planning centers or dedicated rooms where teachers can leave their classroom and do planning work in a separate conference-type seminar space from the classroom. So, those classrooms can be utilized on a much higher rate. Current enrollment in the school is at 1156, and we rate the capacity at 1,445. The difference is 289. Over the next four years, we see that increasing to 439. This building was built originally in 1966 with several sections that have been added and renovations along the way. As a result, the building systems at the high school, the roof is not all of one age, for example. So, as sections of the roof reach the end of their useful life, then individual sections are replaced as you reach the end of useful life. So, there are always projects at high school that need to be done, and there will always be projects at the high school that need to be done. Mechanical, electrical upgrades, sections of roof replacement, sections of masonry restoration, and things like site paving repairs. Those will just happen over the life of this rather large district facility. Do you have questions that, before we move into the options? I'm going to review four options this evening. Are there, do we want to, why don't we address any questions that you might have on those? That was the refresher on enrollment versus capacity and condition of the buildings.
I have a question. As the numbers for Bruce study, the district, we had prepared our own numbers a while back. How do those numbers correlate? Are ours in line with yours? Were they...
The enrollment numbers?
Well, the utilization numbers, the enrollment numbers, I guess the enrollment projection.
Well, yeah, let me, first of all, the enrollment projection came from you, so they are your enrollment projection numbers. These were the numbers that were prepared several years ago by Ken Solvemridge, and they were taken from a chart that probably was produced eight years ago and shows projected enrollment all the way through four years from now, is, I believe, year 19, school year 1920. So, those are exactly your numbers. One comment on the capacity of the schools is, when we started, we talked a lot about the Plan Con capacity of the schools. A lot of board members have seen those Plan Con capacities. Plan Con capacities could be an example of how they might differ from what I think you're actually, how you're actually using your schools. The state uses a utilization rate of 90% for a secondary school. And in practice, the state uses 90% because they only fund based on, you know, they expect you to fill your classrooms 90%. But in practice, you're something less than 80%. So, there's a little bit of a gap between what the Plan Con numbers suggested should fit in these secondary schools in particular and what we estimate you're actually able to use those classrooms simply because you're not able to achieve that 90% utilization rate. The second issue is with regard to the number of special education and pupil support spaces at the elementary level. So, every classroom that we dedicate to special education and pupil support is a classroom that is not used for regular education and counted capacity. So, those, those numbers were slightly less, not a lot, but a little bit less than what the board has seen in the past on capacity.
On the utilization question, classrooms that are used for alternative purposes, I'm going to cite two specific examples. The first thing that comes to my mind, at the high school, we have an old cafeteria used as a student union, students gather. We also have a classroom used as a TV studio. Usages like that...
Mr. Kurtz, can you use the microphone?
Sure.
We can't hear you over here.
You can't hear me, right?
I know we can't hear you.
Thank you. I was asking about the utilization rate that includes classrooms that are being used currently for other alternative purposes. And the two examples I can think of, like the high school, we use an old cafeteria for a student union, and we also use former classrooms, well, one former classroom for a TV studio. See, the uses of those classrooms count for your utilization numbers because if, if they do, my question is, we weren't having TV studios... do, my question is, if we weren't having TV studio in one of those classrooms, that would increase utilization rates if we're using that same science classroom.
Well, to address that specifically, room by room, you can see in the printed report that is available online, there's actually a chart for the high school that outlines room by room which ones receive capacity. But let me give you two examples. The one that you cited, the cafeteria actually has two sides, one is used for student government, one is used for study calls, and neither of those receives capacity. The former library in the middle school is now the band room. It wouldn't have received capacity, but when it, when it was converted into the band room, now it does receive capacity. So it relates more to how the room is being used. There's a former shop, I think it was a metal shop or a machine shop, that's currently used as a district maintenance facility. That does not receive capacity because it's not being used as a career and technical-type industrial arts lab.
So if we were to change, if we were to reuse that space, we could achieve, we could add more?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think it's pretty clear in the high school that the, that there are some spaces in the middle school area that could be reorganized and the capacity of the school, the whole areas of the high school that I think could be vacated and isolated, like the F Wing is the building that's all the way in the back in the corner. That building, as an example, would be relatively easy to isolate and access from the outside so that you could find some complementary use for the F Wing that would be separate but complementary to the programming in the high school and drive up the efficiency of the space.
Last question, for us, that space specifically, the F Wing, would that be, would you possibly be able to, if you could separate that off, probably administrative offices there?
Absolutely.
Okay, please.
That was one of the areas that we talked about for, and that's kind of a secondary decision, as you'll see in the district-wide options, is we're looking at some grade configuration in the options, but once we get beyond that, is, I think there are still some opportunities district-wide that, that no matter what we do with grade configuration, there are still areas, school levels, that are not, have no options to tighten up that space, and the high school's one of them is. None of the options that you look at here will reconfigure the grades in the high school. So any space that's available in the high school today, once we get through the first level of decision-making, that space is still available to utilize for something like relocating the functions in this building into the high school facility. And that's a good example. We'll look at four options. One, we always look at a no-change option. So when you come out of this process, is you always have the option to just sort of put it on the back burner and come back and revisit several years. So there's always a no-change option. The second option, we call the K5, two attendance areas. It would be a consolidation from three elementaries to two and creates two elementary schools with K5 grade level in each. The third would be the K235 consolidation. Similar, it would be a consolidate from three elementary schools to two, or one school would be a K2, early childhood center, and the other would be a 35 intermediate. And the last one, we call the K4 consolidation, and it's actually characterized by being a 5 to 8 middle school. The first option is no change. It would have a K to 5, as today, K to 5 at Amity, K to 2 at Monocacy, 3 to 5 at Birdsborough, the middle school is 6 to 8, and the high school is 9 to 12, no change. The pros, it maintains a successful middle school program, same specialized pupil support, same grade configuration, same attendance areas. This, you know, no change means least disruptive for students and families. It was, geez, why, why, why do we need to change anything around here? Well, the reason we need to change around here, the excess capacity remains. So when you take the sum of all those excess capacities based on our rating, today it's 855 students, projected ahead four years, it's 1,364 students. This option has the highest projected renovation cost. The sum of all renovation costs listed in the report, item by item, totals 11 and a half million dollars over the next 10 years. And this one has the least improvement in operational efficiency. So it makes it that much harder for Mr. Small to pare cost out of budget. To do this, we would still have the opportunity to explore something like alternative location for the functions in this building. We could explore subdivision or sale, release of this building, the former Amity Primary School. It would be time then to start addressing some of the short-term renovation needs identified in chapter five of our report, and then you're really looking at, in three to five years, you're probably going to be back looking at this enrollment versus capacity issue again. Not very satisfying. Second option is the K to 5, two attendance areas. This would be K to 5 for Amity, same as today, but it would transition Monocacy from a K to 2 to a K to 5 and discontinue Birdsborough. The middle school would remain 6 to 8, the high school would remain 9 to 12. The advantages, would drive up the utilization of the elementary centers, but it retains fifth grade at the elementary level. And this came out, a lot of the conversations that we've had is, most parents, administrators, and educators like the fifth grade in with the elementary levels and are concerned about combining fifth grade in with older secondary students. This has a more balanced busing load. So when we say balanced busing load, there are, K to 5 is five and a half grade levels in buses, then there's a second run of buses for middle and high school, that is seven grade level. So it's five and a half versus seven. It's about the same number of buses on each run. Something happened there. Because it discontinues Birdsborough, it saves staffing and operational costs for the closure of one of the three elementary schools. It also has the benefit, there are about $3.6 million in renovations identified at Birdsborough with the mechanical and the paving and so on. So there's some renovation costs that are looming on the horizon at Birdsborough that you could avoid. We're able to maintain the same level of special education and pupil support in this scenario. We, when I say that, what I mean is, we've identified a number of dedicated classrooms that are available for special education and pupil support. We're always checking, when we look at an option like this, we're always verifying that the same number of full-size classrooms remain available. Often, when we are looking at consolidating, families have concerns that the special ed's going to end up in the janitor's closet and so on. So this was one of the precepts of the study, was that we would retain the same level of dedicated space for special ed and pupil support services, or we wouldn't consider the option. This one has a disadvantage when we have two attendance areas with the same grade levels is, not only do we have to adjust to make sure we have balance between the two schools, but it requires some adjustment in the attendance lines from time to time, both to balance enrollment versus capacity across the line, but there could also be fluctuations by grade level. So if there's a bubble of students that comes through, it might be that it happens in one area versus another, at one grade level versus another. So it makes it a little more challenging to balance the enrollment between the two and keep the class sizes, like all of the kindergarten class sizes the same, and all the first grade classes the same, without making tinkering with the location of that attendance area line. And in part because of that, this would delay implementation for another year until fall of 17. This would eliminate excess capacity in the elementary school, which is a, you know, it's a good thing in general, is to sort of tighten up operations, but it also means that for things like changes in programming, if you wanted to do school-age childcare programming, it provides less, once you fill those schools up, there's less space left over for those kind of special early childhood programming options. And in this case, because we haven't done anything to the middle and high school, that excess capacity remains. So the implementation. This, in the fall of 17 then, we could phase in third grade into Monocacy. So the kids that were in second grade in 2016 would stay at Monocacy. They would, they would move over. You would just phase in the K to 5 at Monocacy over a three-year period, and the kids would just never, never leave there. They would never leave there and go to Birdsborough.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Yes.
In the previous slide, it said that we would have no capacity in the elementary centers?
No excess capacity.
No excess capacity? Is that, if you're delaying it till 2017 and we project that the attendance is going to continue down, how long would we be, it'd seem like we'd have to, at some point, we'd have to change back.
Well, we, yeah, we, we do not have, we do not have enough capacity at Monocacy and Amity right now to just take those kids and start in the fall and just move them.
Well, so you said, it said delay till 2017?
Yeah, if we phase out Birdsborough over a three-year period, then those kids, the enrollment would grow gradually at Monocacy.
And do you have utilization percentages for all these scenarios as well?
Yes. Yes, and we can get into the details on that. We have an example at the end is to show how that, how that transitioning would work. The third option is the K to 235, and this one is very similar to the K5, two attendance areas, but uses, one of the precepts that you've used successfully between Monocacy and Birdsborough is by grouping all of the grade levels district-wide into one building is it's easier to get the efficiency of the leveling the students per classroom across all of the kindergarten grades and not have to worry about the location of the attendance The advantage is here, same staffing and operational costs from the discontinuing the Birdsborough Elementary Center. With the added benefit of, with all grade level in one location, it's a grade level program equity by building. And the term that the educators used when we talked about this was, well, this, this scheme is one day open because it's not a two-attendance areas anymore. We're able to retain the same dedicated special education and pupil support, full-size classrooms, and again, it increases the use of Amity and Monocacy Elementary Center. But the sum, the sum of all of the sections can be less per grade level because they're all in one building. There would be no changes in attendance lines, there would be no attendance lines. Keeps the fifth grade as an elementary level, stills a balanced busing is with the K to 5 in one busing run and the 6 to 12 in the second busing run. And this phase implementation can start now, and that's largely because the largest amount of excess capacity is in Monocacy, and that's where we would start on this scenario is, we would start by having all students enrolled next year in the kindergarten program at Monocacy. The cons, you know, like, like so many things, is change can be disruptive for students and families, so, and situations where fams, to the extent that, there are families in the district that have some kids that are in the K2 level and some kids in the 35, and now the kids will be at different schools. It eliminates the excess capacity in the elementary centers again, so this, it's a little less, there's a little bit extra space because we have a few less sections per school, but the excess capacity in the middle and high school in this scenario remains. So we haven't done anything at the middle or high school. And I said before, you start by phasing in the kindergarten at Monocacy, phase in the third grade at Amity, so when the kindergarten kids come over from Amity, that creates some space that the third grade kids can, all of the third grade kids can start in the fall at Amity because it clears, clears out the kindergarten kids. It phases out the third grade at Birdsborough beginning next fall, and then over a three-year period, it phases out Birdsborough and phases in the K to 2 and 3 to 5. And the last one is a K4 consolidation. We could have called this the 5-8 middle school scheme. As you'll recall, the, we rate the excess capacity at the middle school at about 136 students. That's not really enough to fit all of fifth grade, will not really fit in the middle school today. So that was problematical to begin with. Except for that, the board has a policy that those class levels can float up to more kids per classroom. But in reality, while it saves staffing and operational costs and future renovation costs by discontinuing Birdsborough, it does have the benefit of, it takes up that excess capacity in the middle school, and this phased implementation can start now because it would start at the elementary level. This, in execution of a K4 in two buildings, would reserve some additional capacity at Amity and Monocacy, which could hold all of K to 5, would actually hold all of K to 4. So it has enough excess capacity at Amity and Monocacy in this scenario that if you wanted to do future early childhood programming, expansion, pre-K or daycare or school-age childcare programming, whatever that might be, is there would be more room at Amity and Monocacy for those programs in the future. These elementary attendance areas, this is not so tight that we would have to manage that attendance line. There would be no tinkering with the attendance lines in this K4 scenario. This crowds the middle school, and it undeniably does crowd the middle school. It is, it creates a costly complication to the special education, for those of you that are familiar with the special education and pupil support regulations, is the special education can only meet three adjoining grades. So when you're providing services, is you can provide services for 6, 7, 8, which you can't do for 5, 6, 7. but you can't do it for five, six, seven, eight. You have to do five, six, or seven, eight, but you can't do all four of them in one program. So it creates some costly complications to provide the level of special education pupil support service. So there is, there's a cost associated with that. It also complicates special subjects, art, music, phys ed, kind of added library. And here you have a part-time librarian at this school. The, the elementary kids are on a six-day schedule, five-day, well, one on six. So they're on, they're on a different bell schedule and they're on a different day schedule. So that would have to be ironed out. And you have fifth graders that would be coming in to load the art, music, phys ed and library resources in this building. Not that that couldn't be done, but would have to, those details would have to be worked out. But also, it's tight. It would restrict future middle school programming. If you had other ideas, it would be, well, you know, we're going to have to tinker with the program and make sure that we have room for the basics in the short term. And then other changes to the middle school programming would have to be considered on a space-available basis. This combines the fifth grade with the middle schoolers. And I think we've showed this as a pro in the other scenarios. Fifth grade fits better with the elementary grades. This unbalances the busing. So now it's four and a half grade levels at the elementary level and eighth at the secondary level. So it's, this would require less buses for elementary, but more buses for middle school and high school. So there's costs somehow associated with this that would be worked out in the details. And in this case, we've not addressed the excess capacity in the high school. That still remains. So we would do this by phasing in the third grade at monocracy in the fall and phasing out third grade at Birdsboro. Phase in fourth grade at monocracy in eighteen. And then fall of eighteen was where we would jump to a five-eight in this scenario. So we've kind of worked through the scenario. If you remember, the, the grade five to eight enrollment is projected to decline over that time period. So that gives you two or three years to allow that five-to-eight enrollment to decline and they'll fit a little more comfortably in that middle school building. So what do you think?
Okay, first to the public. This is the administration's presentation to the board. This is not the board telling the administration what to do. This is the administration, elementary assistant superintendent, putting together a plan that most effectively uses our school resources. The administration recommends the K two five, K two, the three-five consolidation. K two of the monocracy as an early childhood center. Three-five amity, which would be intermediate. We would discontinue Birdsboro and keep Daniel Boone Middle School and the high school untouched in this plan. Transition will begin immediately. All kindergarten students will be geared towards monocracy. This is the current setup right here, using real numbers. The only estimates in this proposal are for next year and that's the kindergarten numbers. So currently kindergarten at amity is seventy-four, monocracy is at one-fourteen. The capacity at amity is seven-thirty, monocracy is five-sixty. Unitate numbers has a four, eight, sixteen. So that's where we are right now. Next year, kindergarten, including at-risk, will all move to monocracy. As of right now, that number is two-hundred and eighteen. First grade would continue at amity, second grade would continue. Birdsboro, the second graders at monocracy going into third grade would be going to amity, not Birdsboro. This plan removes one grade each year. So all kindergarten goes to monocracy, all third grade goes to amity. Birdsboro no longer has a third grade next year. Year two, kindergarten amity does not exist, neither does first grade. Amity starts at second grade, monocracy now has kindergarten at risk. Two-eighteen for first grade and second grade, one-thirty-three. Birdsboro would not have a fourth grade. As you see, the numbers you're pulling get closer to capacity. Third year, Birdsboro is repurposed. Amity no longer has second grade and we are complete. Amity is third through five and monocracy is kindergarten through two. This total gives us to a capacity of ninety-two percent for both schools. Summary, all students will be relocated during their traditional transition times. No one will be pulled out mid-year or when they would not be going. So when students are entering kindergarten, they'll be going. And then their transition year from second grade to third grade, the year's they do it already. Realigning the staff is more efficient, cost-effective. All the grades will be in the same building. Teachers will all be in the same grade in the same building. All kindergarten teachers, same building. Professional development will be done by grade level in the same building. Right now, we identified thirty-five families who have siblings in transitional grades. So for example, if you're a, you have a fourth grader in Birdsboro and you have someone going in to, I'm sorry, who will be going to amity, they're in Birdsboro or monocracy, they're split. Those families have the option of moving their children together if they like to amity. Transportation costs will remain flat. We have something now that are unloaded buses. Basically, when you see the buses leaving the high school with no one on them, they're driving across town. We're not reimbursed for that. Now that the buses will be routed differently, they'll all be unloaded because they're riding in various patterns. Right now, approximately twenty-three percent of all Birdsboro students do not live in Birdsboro. Originally, we looked at redistricting, moving the line by redners closer to four-twenty-two. That created a capacity issue at amity. Combining students by grade creates an equal learning environment, teacher collaboration, classroom size. Socially, this is something else we looked at. Socially, right now, we have students who come from monocracy, go to Birdsboro, go to the middle school. We have students who go to amity. At that sensitive middle school age is the first time they're meeting a lot of the times and it causes conflict. What we're trying to do is create a relationship, creating one Daniel Boone. So these kids technically will be playing in a sandbox together from kindergarten up through high school. There's no real new faces coming in to each other at that sensitive age. So hopefully, that'll help some of the conflict, the bullying will be decreased because they know each other, they're growing up together. If they live over here on this side of town or the other side of town, they're still all Daniel Boone. Name change. Amity Elementary will become Daniel Boone Area Intermediate Center. Monocracy will become Daniel Boone Early Childhood. Questions? And this is the first time the board has seen this. So I'm sure they've been itching, they know we were working on something. So hit me, I'm ready.
Take your number?
I'll stand here. Questions?
Yeah, I, I don't know. So do we have, what is the plan for Birdsboro? No, I mean, I have a lot of questions.
Okay, the plans for Birdsboro, but we could repurpose it. In three years, the building will be, right now can talk to a day, another provider of education.
I mean, because I'm thinking to myself in the last, the public section we had, there's a lot of discussion about how we could use this capacity. Forget about the options, just, hey, we have capacity. What are we going to, what are some ideas around what we can do with it? So if I'm putting myself in, yeah, as a citizen, I'm wondering, like, what, what came of that discussion? And is there any plan? Because I think, you know, first time seeing it. Personally, I have two kids that are impacted by this plan. So as a, as a dad, I don't care for it. But as a board member and as a member of the public, I understand it and I, it does not make sense to me so. But I think that's the big question I have is the use of Birdsboro. And then just from a general cost perspective, what's the increase in, in expenses that are going to be? You know, you're, you're now upping the student usage in amity and monocracy. So I would imagine it's going to cost a lot more to maintain those schools. In addition, there's probably going to be additional wear and tear. I know you can't put, you know, an exact number on that, but we, you know, don't swag on what those things might cost.
Yeah, well, the first question, Birdsboro. Right now, I'm talking to two different providers of education. I don't know whether you say it right now, but one's a higher ed and one's a future K through twelve, one through twelve program. Wear and tear of the buildings. Right now, the cost to make it a location on my spread footage, we're not increasing spread footage. We're adding bodies to that building, but we're staffing for that already.
Well, all right, you have two kids and then you have a third kid. Is there any more wear and tear in your house? I'll answer that, yes. I'm just, you know, I know it's not the same, but that to me is part of the equation. And then the reconfiguring of the school. There's been a lot of reconfiguring over the last year. I remember Mr. Miller talked about a bunch of changes in the middle school. And again, I don't need to, I'm not trying to put a stick in the, in this boat here. These are just the things that popped up in my head as we were going through the presentation, which I think was really well done. But those are things that concern me. The utilization at ninety-two percent, so what is the impact? I think everybody here would want to know what is the impact on the specials, special education and the student services at those two schools. Granted, over the years, we'll start to review that capacity back. So it's not so much a concern four years from now, but maybe in the first two years it might be a concern.
Okay, what we're doing is we're phasing in over the course of three years. So it's, we, we looked at one scenario where we just shut down Birdsboro. Moved everyone over, we were well over a hundred-and-twenty percent capacity. There's a bubble warranty at the district that had enough. What we're doing is kindergarten bringing in and then third grade. This is going to be a learning curve for all of us also because as we grow each year, we're going to be adding students. So we're not bringing in two-hundred new faces, we're bringing in about a hundred-and-eighty each time. That's going to allow the front office staff, teachers, custodial staff to slowly work up to more and more students. I mean, if you look at amity, there's going to be a hundred-and-eighty new faces that the teachers are going to have to learn, the front office staff is going to have to learn, the principal is going to have to learn. So this is a phased-in approach, not a shut the door tomorrow. This is over three years. We're asking now because we have to, for state rules and regulations submitted to the Department of Education, to bring kindergarten, take kindergarten out of amity, put it in monocracy, take third grade out of Birdsboro, sorry, and put it into amity also. So we need to start that process now. Wear and tear, the buildings are meant to, this is what the buildings are built for. We're not reconfiguring restrooms or anything like that. Once again, this is what the buildings are built for.
I mean. So you are going to change the usage of a lot of the rooms to get to ninety-two percent. Phase it or not at that?
We're going to use the rooms for classrooms.
Yeah, this, when I do a district-wide plan, because I always have worksheets that are in the background. We felt that would be helpful because of the way we're phasing in, would be to share some of my work notes with the board. And I'll leave these here. These are the charts that are in the PowerPoint presentation. Then color-coded kindergarten one, two, three, four, five by, excuse me, by year. Sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen. And then you can see for yourselves that when you take the grade configuration, you can see exactly how many classrooms should be left that can be dedicated to special ed pupil support services. We never touch the rooms that are specials. So we have a gym, we have the library, we have the computer lab. In fact, we have two computer labs at amity. Music band and, oh, I'm forgetting, art, art, yard, I forget the art. And then everything else is special education and pupil support. So it's, I'll leave these for you so you can, it, it's helpful for you to just satisfy yourself that you've got the space set aside so that pupil support services are not affected.
Mr. Harris, in your regard, to Mr. Scott's concerns, with your reconfiguration, you're not changing the board policy on capacity. I mean, the limits for kindergarten, the limits for first to third grade, the limits for fourth to fifth grade, they still exist, correct?
Yes.
You're not kind of seeing this?
No, we're not at all. What we're doing is just putting grades in the center of a building. We're also at that way classroom and class size. Right now, there could be a class at amity that has seventy-six first graders and in monocracy there'd be a hundred-and-eighty. So that's why I originally put it there, redrawing the lines. However, that's, line will have to be redrawn almost every couple of years based on the babies who come to the school. This way, we can remove the lines, flatten the district out and provide distinct learning areas for ages and grades.
So also eliminating, amity having twenty-six students in, in all the fifth grade while, while monocracy only has twenty-three in all?
True. Yes.
Mr. Harris, I was wondering if you could speak a little more to the educational ramifications of this. You mentioned two benefits, I see already. You mentioned that class sizes under this plan will remain within the recommended guidelines. That was one point. And the other benefit you mentioned was that there'd be room for collaboration among all teachers across the district. So you're looking at Birdsboro students learning something different from monocracy students learning something different from amity students. They'll be learning the same material at the same time, I guess, which seems to improve the equity for us in the district. Can you speak to some more, can you elaborate on that a little bit? Why is that such a great benefit?
Well, it also helps when you have all teachers, all students, my daughter's in, I'll say, fourth grade. When you have all the teachers in fourth grade aligned, working together as one, it makes it much easier for professional development, going to students. It also helps the teachers. We have very strong teachers and we could have very weak teachers. It helps by grade if the strong teachers could help work with teachers who were having difficulty. It makes us a school overall a stronger district. It also doesn't have that us versus them mentality where I'll be on a field trip or something where why does amity get to go there, or monocracy get to go there, or working get to go there? We want to go there. It's, we're all now aligned. So teachers trying to work together and be collaborative, but bell schedule doesn't allow it, driving across town doesn't allow it. Now they're all in the building together, sharing best ideas.
I just want to make sure I understand this clearly. You're saying that this will actually enhance the educational quality for all of our students?
That's the plan. There's even conversations about looping where a teacher remains with a class for a number of years, they'll develop relationships. There's pros and cons. It's that, but all data, most data shows that that helps academically for students in the press, working with a teacher, helps with relationships, helps with families. By the time the teacher starts school August, September, gets the class roster together, it's Halloween, we start testing, we roll into Christmas, New Year, the eighth grade, hey, school's over. So this way, and I'm just saying looping, no one's heard me say that here. Sometimes running it out there, but that helps academically develop relationships over the course of a couple of years. And the way the schools are configured, a teacher can loop continuously with that student and totally leave. But that's, that's how I see it.
And Mr. Curtis, that, that's the thing that really has me excited is to have all of the teachers in the grade under one group. Because when you bring all those minds on the same team, all it takes is one teacher come up with a bigger, better, new idea. You've instantaneously got it out to your entire system. You've instantaneously got it out to your entire system. It would be kind of like being a coach. You've got half your soccer team practicing in Burrsboro, half your soccer team practicing here. There's no cohesion. Whereas this way, everybody being under the same roof, you've got the best and brightest of everything right there. Professional development is perfect now. I'll give you two examples that we have each year. We have a writing initiative that we put into play this year. And one of the things that we did is we spent a lot of time doing it in service and having people, we had subs to cover for people so that they can help out with their colleagues as far as the writing initiative goes. Everybody's in the same building now. You don't have to do, for our common planning, for our professional learning communities, and our ongoing professional development, it's right there. You never have to disrupt the educational process. And we're going to do any type of the question we want.
I just see here's a back to the discussion we had on at risk kindergarten, where the teachers that presented the concept in and it was supported by the union, preferred it being in the same building just for that collaboration purposes.
Right, that's one of the things that got this started. Well, kindergarten helps to get together, what happened to more teachers together? And also it helps with programming levels at schools where at Monocacy, you can really focus on the K through two learning range. And then at Amity, the three through five, because they're very different models. So once, so a program at Amity, the thing to do, we geared toward this age group right now. He's going, okay, I have K through five. I have to have some for kindergarten, there's a public through five. Next year, well, a couple of years, it will be three through five. So it's an older age group where it's be more hands-on, more STEM-related. Where at Monocacy, you've got the babies, you have the little ones who are, please touch the meat. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, what do we do to 560 to 600 capacity in Monocacy?
It changes the nature of the classroom. I asked the same question when I worked with the classes. Why did you change? A body's a body, not a body isn't a body. You're changing the nature of the classroom. So you're making a different iteration, capacity changes.
More half-day kindergarten. Half-day kindergarten rooms have a capacity of 40. So we lose 40 out of Amity because we lose kindergarten rooms out of Amity. So you lose capacity. You gain capacity at Monocacy because you have more half-day kindergarten rooms.
Okay. And then just looking at it, so, and you did mention it, Mr. Thompson, but so, yeah, one of the questions I'm going to add to the future is if you don't know, there's big push in federal and state for the pre-pen area. Obviously, we tried not to add anything unless there was money involved. And that seems to be the normal case. So the question is, obviously, would be hard pressed to find a way to bring that to the pre-pen? Would you go through that?
Well, in the end, we still have about 100 seats available. We still have spaces. We're not at 100% capacity. We're in the nineties, low nineties. But my hope is, with the at-risk kindergarten being full, and the pilot being done, and turning it into an early education center, we draw more families in. Those that may not be coming to us to read them all for full day, and our population can increase. That would help to close that gap if we're 100%.
And something else I think we should, I did mention it to administration, but you know, we do have a, what I would call a credibility gap with public that comes through our projections. And we do have the data from 2014 for first in the area. I think we should update that model so that we can, public can see that number.
Exactly. And this model uses our current data. So we're not forecasting out too many years, we're just looking at three years.
Just to address that break to them, Mr. Rathke, but I believe the projections that were put together by Mr. Stonebridge actually turned out to be higher than what our current model is. So I don't think he did this.
I'm not saying he did. I'm saying we have newer numbers, we should add those so that we even have a more statistically sound research out power.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at it from the, if you're looking at the Burrsboro side, right? If you have roughly, let's see, 23% don't. That means there's, the opposite number is, that means you're going to be transporting, there's going to be additional transportation costs involved for transporting those students that used to walk, that now are going to be riding a bus. And if you're going to repurpose the building, I know some of the larger renovation costs are in Burrsboro for the reason you mentioned, the pneumatic upgrades for the heating ventilation. That's not a cost that would be unavoidable, it's still something we're going to have to do. Is that, is that true?
There is a savings to this plan, which I have said, but those costs are not part of the savings. The point is not to shutter Burrsboro and to leave it, abandon or whip up on the windows. If that's not the case, we're still going to have to do the repairs of the building and keep it maintained. Just like when we upgrade the Wi-Fi, we need to keep the building current and relevant. The heat's going to stay on, the lights are going to be on, the water's going to be on. Add a load of usage, obviously, but the building will be repurposed. That's why it's not going to be a good issue. And the transportation side, with routing, actually, with transportation, looking at the routing models, it's one additional bus.
It's about what, 40?
Thirty.
38,000?
Yeah, I mean, just to be clear, Harris, the option that you recommend is probably the most favorable, makes absolute sense. I guess the question is the motivation for doing, maybe any change. And so I guess the other line theme here is we have too much capacity. And so I think there's an assumption that that's an additional cost and we don't have to expend. And I'm just curious to see, when you've got the I's and cross the T's and all the changes that have to occur to execute the plan, repurpose the building, maintain the buildings, all that, change the transportation, et cetera, you know, what is the savings? Like, that to me would have to be pretty compelling to move to executing on any of the plans regardless of how good I think they are.
We're going to have to have those numbers for the May budget presentation. So that's all we're going to have to put together.
The closing, well, remember, this is a phasing approach. We are not turning off the lights in Burrsboro tomorrow morning or Monday morning. But if this plan goes in Burrsboro, as of right now, saves $540,000. That's in operational costs.
Every year.
That's, no, that's at the end of the three years. The only way to save a million dollars is if we didn't have students. There's no, what we save are all the redundancies. That's in clerical staff, secretarial staff, that's in nursing. And that's really it. And that's really it. So of course, teachers, we still need teachers because we still have students. They're just going to a different building. And this move makes it much easier because we're only moving one grade a year. We're not picking up a whole school and closing as they are. Everybody going to this building, they're brand new, welcome. We can, we're going to learn how to integrate staff into Amity, how to take them into Monocacy. But the savings, as of right now, is not half a million dollars.
That's a one-time, one-time savings?
It's going to come down. The cost of running Burrsboro will come down every year. But at the end of the three years, as of right now, it's $540,000.
And every year after that? For every year subsequent?
No, that's, if I'm asking you for $2 million to run this school, now I'm asking for 1,500. It's not going to be for your current savings. I mean, it is.
But that 500 will exist every year. I got it, I got it.
What would be, the bad thing would be, what happens every two years, say, if they didn't close? Or residents? And then you have to turn around and put them back in.
We would have to get about 200 more students to be 100%. So, once again, if a large company, and we had this conversation, a large company, say Walmart wants to relocate from Central Market Square. And they want to put it in, I don't know, Amity, I'm assuming. And we have hundreds of families coming in, hundreds of students. We still could revert that to our current plan. Now, the problem is if we get four real leaves here and there's 20,000 new jobs, then we have a problem with any district. We still have Burrsboro. We have this campus, we have this building here, which would turn into a campus along with Amity.
Other than the initial savings, do you have a projection on the, can I potentially take that over?
That would be part of a lease negotiation. But they would take over the entire building. We would probably want to maintain maintenance on it just so that it stays current and not have to be repaired. But there is some, that would be a cost to them for us to maintain. That would all be negotiated through Burrsboro.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel, but I feel like initially, this whole thing was presented as we had this huge expense of excess capacity. And now I feel like the story is changing to, we're going to save half a million dollars, but the real win is a better education for the kids. So I mean, that, to me, is sort of what has to sink in. And I guess the other part of it is, that doesn't include all the other incidental costs that we haven't really accounted for yet.
Right, this plan was, I mean, if you know my background, my background's operations. So this, this plan was not put together by me, Lauren, the business manager, and Casey, the facilities director. This plan was put together by the chief superintendent, David Geisel, the two principals. It was academic.
Duh.
And the benefit is that it does save money. This is what they would like, they have their models look like. It just happens to save some money. When I got here, I was told, we save a million. This doesn't save a million dollars. It saves us half a million, makes us more efficient, allows us to deliver services, more services, more complete services, cheaper to own the building now.
But this, this plan though would exclude the possibility of going to full-day kindergarten anytime within the, within this, the exam plan.
The four-day, well, right now, the pilot is for four years. So this is a three-year model that can be adjusted. I'm only asking to do it now because we have to move kindergarten to the building. And there's big work in the Aldees with the state.
No, well, I'm looking at, I'm thinking about the building capacity. I mean, that's all based on half-day kindergarten. If we suddenly, if we decided, all right, say you're going to, you know, go with this plan to close Burrsboro with that money, just say the board decided, hey, you know, instead of doing whatever with this money, we're going to go and expand our kindergarten to full day. Well, we wouldn't have the capacity to do that with this plan, would we?
Well, I think your numbers are 180 or 200.
Yeah, you're at 20. We're including two.
These numbers include two at-risk kindergartens?
Right, this has seven, seven dedicated kindergarten rooms. Two of those are at-risk kids, 15 each. By the second year, it goes down to six rooms. So there's an additional room here, so you could have two more rooms that are at-risk kids or full-day kindergarten.
Keep in mind, I'm not talking about the.
Well, I understand, but as these, as the enrollment continues to shrink. So in the second year, we're showing 10 first-grade classrooms. In the third year, we're showing eight first-grade classrooms. So keep in mind, as that enrollment continues to decline, even in the Monocacy building, there are more and more rooms that open up each year. So in this case, could you do full-day K in the third year? I say, yes, you can, because the band room's open, plus 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. That gives you three, we're trying to reserve six classrooms here. So this shows nine open classrooms. Six would be reserved for special education and pupil support. So you could pick up 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. You could pick up nine kindergarten full-day classrooms.
This plan also moves a life, creates a life skills classroom at Monocacy that doesn't exist now. If there's one at Amity, create another one at Monocacy. So there is space.
Let's just expand on what that means, just so for everybody's benefit, with life skills.
Life skills would be part of a lot of our disabled students who need extra services. Could be mobility, could be educational needs that they have. And right now, we're the facility that has the life skills classroom in it. So we would have to expand to Monocacy to have those services be available to that operation.
Thank you.
So once again, we can increase our services and still save physical money. But this wasn't a going.
No, I think, you know, from my, from my perspective, I'm, as a parent who puts kids through the school district, you know, in order to get the kids into, you know, the classrooms like this, I won't accept, you know, the fact that we would go over our policy. And I understand that maybe 30 would be the physical capacity of a room, but I can't stand that to be a functional capacity for a teacher. I mean, I just, it just wouldn't make sense. And I guess I would want to see all those, what would those enrollment numbers be per classroom? And that would be something I think as a board, we'd have to decide if we're comfortable with.
Yeah, just part of, part of leaving this here with you is I jotted the numbers next to the legend down here. So for example, in the third year, third grade, 216 students. You can see these numbers for yourself. Nine classrooms, 24. So it's within, it's within the maximum. And you can see where those, with the number of classrooms shown, based on the projection, how many kids per classroom.
I believe the 30 was the total at-risk kindergarten that we were concerned, 15 per class. So we're not going to have 36 at classrooms, 15 per classroom, just total of 30.
Mr. Matt, can we, can we get these, these ties and put on the public site of our website so they can see those themselves?
Thank you. We, when we crunch the numbers at Amity, with looking at all of the fourth and fifth grade being at Amity, our class size has actually dropped two or three students per class.
Yeah, I know there's been a disparity because of where the students are. You know, some of them are over our capacity, right, over our maximum, and some are far under. So having them together, it makes, I understand, you know, the logic of having them together so you can make sure there's equity as far as the classroom size.
I think Mr. Scott's right. It certainly is a lot of efficiency. But looking at it as an educator, it's terrific for the education for students, no doubt about it. It's a huge link all the way around. Plus, teachers have all that ability to collaborate and collaborate to you now.
And also, this is a three-year plan. We're just asking to kick it off now because we need to start the ball. If not, we're going to have to come back again in a couple of years with the same issue. And it becomes a problem with capacity, ability to suggest, close the school. This, we thought was the most uninterrupted way of moving students during their natural transition or when they're initially coming into the school, their natural transition, and slowly phase it out. There's a feeling along the proof that this may not take three years. Parents might say after the first year, hey, you know what, this is going well. Let's just make the move now. Like I said, there's about 35 parents that have siblings that would be in different schools who could make the move if they so chose. So the feeling is this may only take two years. But once again, it's a three-year plan.
Mr. Harris, this was a question, but what if you have an incredible enrollment rate at St. Convention of Walmart, who would be here, but they all, I think we all agree, it's fantastic. They had a great big business in the entire area, that was everybody. But if you look at the enrollment numbers, this trend is not changing. It's not reversing. Mr. Martino and I attend Amity Townships meetings regularly, including the planning edition. They're not looking at any new developments coming in for a very long time. It meets in the next, I don't know, 10 years. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it is a long time until they anticipate any building returning to Amity Townships. So this issue, if it is an address now, it's not going away. It's just going to continue to be exacerbated as time goes on. So I think that's what we're remembering too.
I think, you know, we, us, you know, I represent Burrsboro. Okay, my constituents, you know, we all love Burrsboro, the school, because our kids went through there. So we have this emotional attachment to it. You know, but, you know, 500,000, say, I'm just throwing out, say, you could go to full-day kindergarten with that savings. Would you want to think about that? But the school could possibly still exist as some other form of education. But the school would, could possibly still exist as some other form of education, would be Daniel Boone. But, I mean, I, I think, I think we have a fiduciary responsibility, you know, even though it's uncomfortable to talk about, and, and for me, I'm just trying to get my mind around it, I think we have a responsibility to, to look at and make a decision what's in the best interest of the, of Daniel Boone School District, not necessarily for what's.
But the, kind of your point, the, the issue is a financial one.
I agree.
Right? I mean, this is a.
Once again.
This is a, an improvement to the educating of the kids, right?
Once again, I don't think Lauren was in any of our meetings.
Yeah, no, no.
This was academic. He was in the first one, because he brought the map, then he left. He did, I saw the map, the big maps in my office. We looked at, redrawn the lines to make things equitable. But as we discussed it, we looked at, wow, we need to do something totally different and look, and try to correct other situations that are occurring in the district. One also, as I go back to, is the situation at the middle school. It's not out of control, but at that age, at those teenage years, when those kids get in together, they pick on each other, it was bold. And we feel that if we provide more intervention and, and support for those students growing up into the, as they transfer in, there should be less conflict between them of picking on each other. You know, some grow up over here, some grow up over on the other side of La La. They never meet each other unless they're in some athletic event or other activity, music, band, arts, all that could be, they grew up together. We feel that would be a much better relationship-building tool at the middle school level.
Mr. Scott, I think, and my mic won't go on, there's too many mics on. If this improves education, and improves the social aspects, and saves money, I think it's hard to argue.
Yeah, I, I guess my question is, you know, again, this is a high-level estimate, is it going to save money?
And to one, one point to that, if we're fair with on the money side, I think we need to figure out, we have a saving, but what kind of income we have for, 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 for the factors to be included, that number to be fair on the, on the other side. And to Mr. Harris's point is that I got a calorie a little bit, because, you know, there's been a lot of comments over the years about the building of Monocacy and, and past school decision of doing that, and should they have done that? And, I mean, if you were sitting in Amity Township meetings in 2004 and '05, and you saw a number of buildings in the books, I find it hard pressed, the question that past school decision to build Monocacy. But same token today, you're saying that there's saying there's no development, but how can, how can, they were saying that there was a ton of development, and that we had the recession, and nobody built houses, nobody had kids. Now, that, that's kind of starting to turn around, where you're having millennials buy houses, have kids. Now, is it going to be a rapid increase? I don't think so. But saying there's no development, I, I think is just as foolish as when they said before, if all is development, then we'd go to school if we didn't need to. And I hate to say, we're going to say the same thing, and say, now we close the school and five years out of road, now we go, as we.
Well, thank you, Mr. Harris. You're quite as well taken there. The difference, how I see it, is we still have our disposals of this rate, this building, and we will have Burrsboro as well. We need, we need to.
Right, guys, I got to see, I think, you know, when I came on the board, you know, I, I voted to have an administration here because I was new to the board. I felt that there was a lot of study put into that, and I didn't really want to make a decision without knowing. Having seen that, maybe the administration should go somewhere else, and maybe this building should be totally repurposed and gotten out of the arsenal of our buildings. So maybe this building won't be available.
That's a discussion later. For me, when I think about education and I think schools, I don't think about the brick and mortar buildings. See, education's what happens inside. So if you're telling me that we can provide a better, higher-quality education to every student in this district, I think every parent and every guy and every taxpayer would agree that, whether you're in Burrsboro or Amity, or Union Township. But those are my thoughts, some checks I know are before I present.
How powerful would it have been if Booster Fund was across the entire city where we live, not just kids over here at Amity, but it's everywhere, Burrsboro too, all running around that gym, getting chased by bald guys. Was it the box? And, and, Mr.?
We could have a bigger.
Harris?
Yeah, we could.
Do you have any more questions for Mr. Harris?
Come on, speak now, everyone will be pleased.
I guess the, see this, look at, see the details, because we're going to have to act on this, you know, fairly shortly, we're going to need to see the details.
That's my primary question, Mike, is what's the, what's the timeline? Are we, at this point, are we?
Well, it sounds like we're going to have under the presumption that in two weeks we vote on this?
Yes.
No?
The, the situation is, we have to prepare for incoming kindergarten.
What is the deadline for having that submitted? They just weren't their way back.
It's May, it's one of your orientations. Right, we start the orientations in May, so we need to, if we want to make this move for, starting this year, we have to let the parents know, to be fair, that their kindergarten will be going to Monocacy. And also, the rising second graders will be coming into Amity. So we would have to open houses, open schools up, have the teachers be aware, informed people, and also send the proper information to the state. So our issue is really with the incoming kindergarten, with the open houses, and the random programs are happening now, where we do teach them how to ride the bus and around, things like that. And the principals have programs planned.
Well, that's a lot of work in two weeks.
And we're also going to have to have the financial numbers put together, if we're going to make a good presentation.
It just made the complicated situation more so.
Financials, we have. I know, I, I would hate to take parents on tours of Amity, knowing that there's a good probability we're going to go to Monocacy, but that just didn't seem like it made a whole lot of sense. So I think if we're willing to have everybody go to Monocacy, if you make that decision like that, I think it would be a speed.
Mr. Harris, is there any reason, is there any reason to make that PD, would they have any problems with this?
No.
Would they actually like it? Would it be any benefit?
I don't think they would.
It's more of a conventional configuration, or renaming, it's going to be consistent.
I think they would like it, the fact that we're getting more ambition, or we're looking for, working off the basis of academic success and future development support, and not splitting our resources right now. We're splitting our resources down more on the two, which seems, it's expensive to do.
So that would make the process a little faster? Is it safer soon? You don't have any problem with the approval?
We'll be, depending on the lawyers, so I don't know how long that would take. Ours is not hard on our end, so.
Why would we approve of PD when we're not closing the school?
Just to change the configuration.
We still need, we still need permission.
Because we would no longer have a kindergarten in Amity, third grade.
Is there a way that you can, that you can push kindergarten orientation back two weeks? And I, I don't, I don't know if you do it in early May, or do it in late May. I know it's getting towards the end of the year, so that's a problem, but.
Principals, we have to, you know, we have to, we do.
Well, it's better than doing a second orientation in July.
You're the boss. If you tell us to do it, we do it. We'll make it work. So this is something that has to be really decided, like if we're going to do something, and once again, this is a three-year plan. So Burrsboro stays open on this, that's three more years, but we have to slowly phase into it, not even very disruptive. And if we make a decision three years from now, that, you know what, the population is way down, we got to close Burrsboro. And on, on this plan, also, if you look at the numbers, the last year, there's 147 students in Burrsboro, fifth grade, in current third grade. So there may be a time where the community says, you know what, hey, everything's going well, the kids love Amity, let's move it. Okay. But, but this plan is based on a three-year phase-in, phase-out plan. But if not, we would start, if you say, no, we're going to wait, we'd start it next year. But at some point, the population increases, occur, and we have to do something. And we do have, you know, financial issues also.
And I think, I'll speak for myself, I think you should start the, you know, start the process. And, and while that happens, get us the firm numbers, you know, for everything from the cost, cost savings, all that, but, you know, make sure, you know, I'm sure there'd be questions about class sizing and so forth. You know, get all that prepared, get everything ready, so the board can have as much information on hand to make a decision.
I'll have that tomorrow.
Leave yourself some leeway.
It's not. We, we were waiting so that we all, I mean, we hit each other with hundreds of questions, there were scenarios, before bringing this to you tonight, because we wanted to bring to one plan, and once again, this is a three-year plan. So we're going to start, this is only phase one. We look at changes for the high school in this book, and red admin of all of the other high schools. We look at the middle school program changes. So we'll be coming back, well, obviously, we'll be coming back monthly with different program, programs that aren't really costing that much, but we're giving a really return on investment. Once again, this is a learning process for us, also phasing this in. We're going to discover stuff the first year, then we probably would make a, you know, one, principal says, hey, since this is going to go so smoothly as it's done before, after the first year, those are some decisions, let's make it happen.
Now, the focus is really on the kids, and while you were making your presentation, I, I look over at the administrators, and I saw a lot of, you know, head shaking and agreement, and hearing games words were, you know, of course, important. So from my perspective, you know, move forward and put the, get the numbers out to us with as much information, get this information to the public, and see you in two weeks.
So for clarity, kindergarten, do we offer tours of Monocacy, not Amity, or wait two weeks?
I think we'll wait two weeks. I think we wait two weeks. I, I think, I, the mood I, I have heard from, from some of the comments is that I think this, the decision is a big one, and I don't think we want to be forced into an artificial timeline if we can, you know, push back the orientation, you know, a couple of weeks, you know, if the administrators are comfortable with that, for, you know, we have to make an informed decision. And everyone has to have all the information and feel comfortable about it before, before we do that. If I'm gay, I don't want to speak, everyone speak their mind, please.
Another point that I think is very important is that accurate information is spread, disseminated through districts online media, so we have to make sure that the proper information gets out about this, because there are a lot of different platforms people can use, and a lot of the information may not be accurate. So it's important we use district communication screens to ensure that true information is getting out there among the plans. I'm sure it's already out there, we're talking about this. So I think that that needs to happen very quickly, and that's part of the plan.
One of the things we wanted to do after the tours of less, and we asked to go out to Burrsboro, administrative wives, answer any staff questions that they might have, because I've been talking to the people on the ground, you know, ground zero, they had different questions that we all have. There are, they have personal questions about where they're going to be in two or three years, so we can answer those questions also. And we could ask, we can answer individually what we can ask. So we were talking, we were talking about going on a road trip to Burrsboro, Monocacy, and Amity, with the staff, and answering their questions personally, not in a public forum. So that would be after, I guess, the two weeks.
Well, thank you very much for the hard work that both of you have put into making the presentation. I'm sure I can speak for the rest of the board, you've got a lot, a lot to consider, and a lot rolling around in my mind that I haven't decided how I feel about it, but, I mean, in the end, you know, it's really, putting aside personal, you know, obligations from living in Burrsboro, it's really about the students and what's best for them. And then what we could do, what we could possibly do with that savings, that's enough. I'll leave it there. Thank you. Mr. Derso, if you'd like to come forward.
I'm Aaron Derso. I'm Aaron Derso, Borough Manager for the Borough of Burrsboro. I understand, we throw education, it's important for the kid, throw that card out there, it's hard to argue, I think. To actually talk about some positive things that we were doing in our community and actually going to really benefit Daniel Boone, this is almost kind of a, kind of a kick to the brunt, to be quite honest with you. But I'll continue to focus on positives, because that's what we do in Burrsboro. I'm not in any other municipalities, and I can't speak for them, although I know Troy really well, he's a good guy in Amity. You know, Burrsboro, we were told, we're down and out. We were a dead community, we were a nubly community. This council over the last six years has done a ton in this community. Our whole focus on our community redevelopment centered around Burrsboro Elementary Center. We actually did promotional videos, and in that promotional video, that says, come to Burrsboro, we talk about Burrsboro Elementary Center. And we talk about, obviously, about high school, because it's right in our backyard now. Guess I gotta go change that, pull that down. And we talk about one Daniel Boone, and I guess that's great, but I don't see that as one Daniel Boone, as a parent. My kids never had an issue transitioning from Burrsboro to the middle school, to the high school. It'd be quite well. They got picked on, that happens, kids are kids. But back to Burrsboro. We saw the school as an asset in our community. In doing so, we re, we fixed West Second Street and Adams Street last year, some major street repairs, some major repairs around the cash basins, in the hopes that that would continue to improve the school. I went out, and it misses, this is again, really depressing point from here. I went out and secured a grant for $105,000 to redo all the ADA areas around the elementary school, and continued other areas there for safe routes to school. I didn't ask the school district to fix your ADA ramps. We didn't come after you, incite you to do that. I took it upon myself, and then the Borough Council encouraged me to do that, and I submitted a grant, and put, you know, time and effort into that, and then had to go stand in front of a committee and present that grant with sole purpose of bettering the entryways into our elementary school. We worked with the Board in establishing ALERTA. For those that are new to the Board, ALERTA District is a local economic recovery tax abatement. Ours is a five-tiered system. So year zero, when they do something, their, their tax rate stays the same what it was, and it increases 20% every year after that. So by year six, you get 100% of that. We promised this school, we promised this school board, that if you voted for that ALERTA, we would deliver. And we hit a home run. The shops at St. Mark's Square was built. The shops at St. Mark's Square is assessed at 1.8 million, and is currently in that ALERTA. At the end of that ALERTA, the school district will receive yearly $52,128, because Burrsboro stepped up the plate and said, if you help us, we're going to help you. And we did, we kept our word. We also asked you, as a school board, to extend the Keystone Opportunity Zone at the old Armor Cast facility. And we all agreed, we extended seven years. And we asked, and we told you, we're going to deliver. And you have no idea the amount of time, meanings, that I have not been around my family, and other council members have not been around their family, because for the last, even when I was a council member, I was so passionate about getting this developed, the owner locked me in, because he was so mad at me one day, because I brought the DVP down as an inspection. That's how passionate I was about developing that site. And we fought hard, and we were bringing in a company that's going to be called Burrsboro Power, with the assessed value in 2020, when it's, it'll be, built, the end of, middle of 2019, it'll be operational. 2020, when it's out of the Koz, an assessed value of $30 million. At your current tax rate, that's $868,800. Come to the school district.
No services necessary.
Thank you, no services necessary. We asked you for a commitment, you gave it to us, we gave you a promise, and we're But it's one Daniel Boone. It doesn't seem that way right now. We also have, and I'll, I'll go back to the shops at St. Mark's Square, that was We also have, and I'll go back to the shops at St. Mark's Square, that was non-tax land, and we had to go to a church and ask them to sell that land, and we took a lot of heat for it. I was told I sold God's land, I explained to people, "Well, I believe all land is God's land." But, you know, it wasn't easy for us, and we made the hard decisions. That was non-taxable land that we put on the tax rolls. We also have a potential car museum, and I say potential because the only reason it hasn't happened is, once the land sale from the Armored Cast happens, these plans are already in place, but nothing can happen until the transfer of land. We had plans for a car museum that's coming out of Burrsboro, and the good thing about this is, again, it's on non-taxable land. And once that museum's built, guess what? That land's taxable. It's not in LERTA, it's not in the KOC. When it's built and it's assessed, that's money. It's money for us, but that's pennies. When you talk about Armored Cast, you're looking at $868,000. We don't receive a fraction of that. The car museum, we don't know what that assessment's gonna be yet, but it's a 35,000 square foot facility. Even at 400,000, which I think is a low assessment, that's $11,584 at your current tax rate. That Burrsboro stepped up to the plate and delivered. So if you throw the grant that I secured, and the money's I'm just talking about, in the year 2020, let's take the grant out, in the year 2020, the school district will get $932,000, $932,512, because Burrsboro made a commitment to you. That if you helped us with that LERTA, and you agreed with us with that KOC, that we would deliver. And the exciting thing about Burrsboro Power, I just told you about phase one. Phase two's in works. Once the financial close happens on phase one, we do the phase two. Now, that's not gonna be another $30 million assessment, but that's still a lot of money, what it's gonna be. And so as you're making decisions, and we played a little bit on motions about the education for kids, and I get that I have kids, they were educated, they did well at the, they're doing well in college. I understand education, I might don't get a degree, I understand what it costs to go to school. But being one Daniel Boone is a lot more than just saying in three years, which are really gonna be two. You're gonna shutter Burrsboro Elementary and repurpose it, and if you repurpose it and you have a plan, that would be great to know, because right now, I hear repurpose, but I basically think, "An empty building." So it'd be nice to know if there's a repurposing plan, and you're not, you're not able to say, "Well, that doesn't do myself as a person who manages the municipality any good." And maybe you can't say, because contracts aren't signed, I understand that, we've had to do that as well with the development we're talking about. But as you're making these decisions, and we throw bullying out, and it's a problem. I've had kids, they were bullied. I don't think the bullying goes away because kids go through the same school together, kindergarten. My daughter didn't have this, had friends in kindergarten that she didn't hang out with while she was senior high school. My son had friends in middle school that he didn't hang out with, in elementary school and vice versa. It's an issue, I understand, no one wants their kid to be bullied. But before you make these decisions, and some of you weren't on the Board when, when we had these discussions, and I understand that, but I think you need to ask yourselves, what municipalities are stepping up to the plate delivering for you financially? What municipalities are going out and writing grants to fix your ADA ramps? What municipalities have lent a hand and actually put down safe crosswalks in your We paid our guys to do that. Why? Because we saw ourselves as one Daniel Boone. We saw ourselves as part of a bigger community. And I, like, this is good news and it's terrible to sit here and listen to this presentation knowing that in the year 2020, you're getting over $932,000, and you're gonna close the school in my neighborhood. And I say my neighborhood because my backyard literally goes into, into the playground that school. So not only am I the Borough Manager, I have to change the marketing of our community now, but now I have to worry about what's gonna happen in my backyard. We kept our commitment to you guys, and we continue to keep our commitment to you guys. But it just kinda feels like, as these decisions were happening, no one reached out to us and said, "Hey, what's going on in Burrsboro? I appreciate Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Martino went to Amity council meetings, I appreciate that. They're boring." I sit through our meetings all the time. But no one ever reached out and said, "Hey, Burrsboro, what are you doing?" And I guess I'm at fault because I never stepped foot in this meeting room and told you what we were doing. Part of it's a conflict because we have our meetings on the same night. But I also read that Union Township was reached out to as well, but nobody came to Burrsboro. We've had a school on that site since 1890. You guys remember, I brought in the big picture the last time? A little more adversarial than this tonight. 1890, Burrsboro, Daniel Boone. And now, we're not really Daniel Boone. We're on the other side of the river, we're on the other side of 422. We don't want division, but it's just been created. And that plan can look good, and obviously, we know why monocracy was built, a little bit of a bitter pill for us, because that school was built, enrollment dropped, and guess who's getting handed the shot? Burrsboro. We didn't do anything wrong. As a matter of fact, as a Borough Manager, I've seen our real estate transfer taxes improve drastically over the last two years. You know what that tells me? As I prepare my budget, that I'm seeing homes that before closed, I'm sold. And you know who's moving into Burrsboro? It's not the wealthy. It's people who have young families because our housing's affordable. That doesn't mean we're any less, and it doesn't mean we're any better, it's just the reality that Burrsboro's housing is a little bit more affordable at times for young families. So revenues aren't being talked about. Enrollment's being talked about, but we're not even quite sure of those numbers. I don't know. We had this dance before, and numbers didn't add up. And I guess as a representative of the Borough of Burrsboro, as you're making this decision, and I understand education is hard when argued, it'd be easy for me to stand here and yell and get all upset, do Mrs. Kramer do a thousand, write to no requests, I'm not gonna do that this time. But think about commitments that were made, now some of you weren't here, but think about commitments that were made and I'm staying here, think about what has been delivered. You're saving $500,000 a year, maybe it's a better education, I won't argue that, but if you're talking about saving $500,000 a year, 2020 almost doubled what you just saved. I shouldn't say I, Burrs did. The Burrs did. I appreciate the time, I know there's gonna be other people to speak. I do appreciate Mr. Walton and the Board that you allowed me to be on the agenda. And neither news, wasn't gonna be good news, I was hoping we had a little bit more time to discuss these things. I hope you heard what I have to say. I've been a part of the Daniel Boone family for a long time, with my kids coaching. My kids are out of school and in college, and I'm still coaching, why? Because I enjoy, I enjoy doing it, I enjoy being a part of the community, and I enjoy helping the kids. This stung a little bit today, guys. And I've been in your seat, I've had to make decisions that stay. But I've also had to step back and reevaluate sometimes, change, sometimes make, change decisions. If you can't do it, I understand, but all I'm asking is, think about what I've just said, weigh in with all the other facts you get, and please consider, if you have an alternative, bring it forward, let us know who it is that's gonna be in our backyard. I'd love to continue to do the grant, but now do I repurpose that for somewhere else in the borough? I could, I could have done that anywhere, but I, we chose to do the elementary center. I don't know, at this point, I, you know, it'd be nice to know where you guys, in the next two weeks, if you let us know, because I have to make a decision now on grant one. I was kind of excited about that, getting that. Again, thank you for your time, I know you guys have been listening, I appreciate it. I don't envy the physician.
Thank you. Mr. Dershowitz, may I have a copy of that, please?
I forgot I need one.
If you don't have it, you can mail it to-
No, I need one.
All right. I just need one for the record. At this time, is there any other public comment?
Two of the questions I had was, one, would full day kindergarten be, in the future, ever be brought, be brought back with the consolidation of the school districts, of the buildings? Will there be space? Another thing I think should be considered is, over the past probably eight, 10 years, there have been a lot of cuts, you know, programming. Our gym class, art class, music class, all have been brought down to a bare minimum. We also had foreign language in middle school that was removed. A band used to be part of the programming until there was fees, the, the, what do you call it?
Activity fees.
The activity fees went in place. Well, the band was removed from the curriculum in order to charge those parents an activity Well, did anyone, oh, I should ask you, because they didn't see the program. Did you guys look at what has been pulled out of our education? And if you, if there, if you guys didn't consider that, would you guys please consider that and see if, you know, some of the stuff that was cut could be brought back? Because year and year slowly things, because of budget issues, you know, had been kicked out the door, and the community was hoping that once everything got back into place, that we can start bringing back these, the, you know, the programs that were cut, would these, would the school buildings be able to take the extra classes that were cut? So that was two of the things out of many things, questions I had to ask, but one was the full day kindergarten, and one was, would it be possible in the future, all of the programming that was cut be brought back when funding would be available?
I could tell you that everything is being looked at. I had a meeting today with the Foreign Language Department at the high school, and there is a plan, as of right now, surveys out, and it was kinda alluded to in here by Mr. McKnight, that we're looking at bringing in another language, and it will be at the middle school, if there is interest, and the language is Mandarin. So the Board hasn't heard that yet either, but there are lots of things that we're looking at doing. And I know some of it's undoing or bringing back things that were taken away. What we're trying to do academically is just provide the best education for students.
Right, but if we brought back, would there be space in those buildings? Because if you, you said if you would do it today, you would be 100%, 20% capacity.
Right, we're at capacity, as of right now, if we close Burrsboro and move all the students out, we don't have the capacity for that. However, the numbers, our enrollment is declining over the next few years, and there's also a bubble that's going through. And my daughter is part of that bubble, I guess I, we put her over and now we're moving here, fourth grade. But we're utilizing the classroom space, and as Mr. Thompson said, there's other space in the buildings that we're not, we're not moving into the cafeteria and setting up classrooms in the cafeteria, or in the art room, or the music room. One of the things we looked at when we put this plan together is music. I mean, all of a sudden, music at Amity becomes a very large program. So how do we keep music, which my daughter's in, she plays the saxophone, keep her interested in music, and still have the programming? So we're looking at scheduling and everything. So we're looking at maybe two levels of music program. We're not trying to eliminate program, but we also like to bring things that are the best for the students, and to want, to make people wanna move here to Amity, Burrsboro, Douglasville. We wanna make this a destination school district, so providing the right academic makeup, but being financially responsible. So we don't have a un-whiteout list of things that were crossed off, however, there are programs like dual enrollment at the high school, the pathway model, the, you know, the great music programs here, and my son plays football and runs track, so we wanna keep athletics here also. So we're looking at all things.
Right, I guess my question was more on the basis of if your enrollment was, if your usage was based on empty classrooms. When you bring back a class that was cut, or a new class, those classrooms are no longer available, and if your population isn't going down, which it has been, you guys were pretty accurate with the decrease of the population, but if that changes, and you can't, and if the funding comes in, but you have no space to expand your program, that's, that's more or less where I'm coming from, is if everything gets back to normal, would this, would your plan be able to include expanding of our education?
Well, one of the things you said, this is the new normal. It, that, what you're talking about occurred in the past is the past, and I had this conversation with the Foreign Language Group today, they were going back to 1998. Now, we have people who, you know, who weren't even born in 1998. What we're trying to do is make this school district a destination school district. We have space, we're not, we're not 100% full, and what you saw tonight was an elementary program. The high school has tons of space still available, and there'll be a second plan for usage of that, and also this building.
Specifically, you're talking about middle school languages, which we're not the typical to have accessibility there, and you're talking about specials, that cutting the time down what you did, with the increase in time, we still have the art room, the music room, the gym, so that those are all still there, you're just talking about storing the amount of time that few students get in there.
Yes.
So I'll take those two with me.
Okay. But if you can, even if you haven't done it yet, please go back and look through what was through you in the last 10 years from our education. Thank you.
Hi, Nonsary 5018, Burrsville. Mr. Kurtz, refresh my memory, F-section, which section is that in the school?
The junior-
Yeah.
Middle rack.
It's middle back, I think it's near the old cafeteria, and that box.
The principal's here, why don't you ask-
The backside.
Yes. You said it correct.
This is just a thought, but what do you think about a daycare that's totally self-sufficient for the Daniel Boone employees? Things, when you have rooms like that empty? That's-
I bet he's thinking about it.
We looked at it, we looked at that already for monocracy, daycare centers, the programs-
Yeah, to use the rooms. I think too, when you close the buildings right away, honestly, Mr. Casey, I mean, no one goes in the bathrooms to flush the toilets or to do, that's why these bathrooms, no one was in this building for how long? And all that said, that's what ruins the equipment. It really is. And the annex, how about all the equipment that's sitting like, we call it the graveyard at Daniel Boone? The old kitchen, all of that equipment- at Daniel Boone, the old kitchen, all that equipment, kitchen equipment? It's not going to make a million dollars, but all of it helps if you're not going to use that cafeteria again.
I believe some of that was moved out.
I know we had a yard scale years and years ago.
Well, some of that was moved to Birdsborough. And I know some of it was moved out of here when it was closed and that distributed around because obviously the cost.
Yeah.
And it did save the pack of furniture.
Yeah, I know. Because I got somebody, I was Birdsborough and I got somebody's brand new equipment. They just put it in a school and then they closed it. I, you know, I remember the superintendent, I said to him, is there a blue light special in building schools given? I need to play it. Also, I know you're a board, you can't think of everything, Mr. Hachey. Maybe sometimes form a committee. I know we superintendent that did this, with a professional staff and a classified staff and a parent. And if, when they get together, sometimes they can think of things that, you know, but leaving sometimes the buildings just sit empty isn't doing, and I think a lot of it sounds good, but somebody needs to still go in and take care of some of it or you're just going to put, and honestly, I don't think the buildings have been maintained.
Well, you mentioned, the board has committees. There's a facilities committee, a policy committee that, it's open to the public. And I know in the facilities that I, that I go to, along with the curriculum disruption, community members come in and are more than welcome to talk and it's a smaller room.
I think when you have different, you know, variety of people, you can think things through and come up. Because there is ways, these buildings are used hard. The high school, they're used hard. I mean, there was a drum group that came in 11 o'clock and left at 1:30 in the morning when I was hardship up there, every Friday night, colleges. They're used very hard. So it's just, you know, maybe there's ways that you can make money and, you know. Thank you.
Cindy McGee, question for President O'Hanlon. I'd like to say that the major component of this plan that I'm completely perplexed about is why do we choose monocracy instead of Birdsborough to keep open? We're the only, that would leave us with the only municipality with no school. We are DB except for you, Birdsborough, who we can't keep a facility open. Union Township we have too, right? Amity would have, Amity Elementary, the middle school. Where are we in that equation? We are not there. You have to understand, our elementary school is in the middle of our community. We're not in your cul-de-sac. Amity Elementary is not in your cul-de-sac. It's not in your backyard necessarily. Monocracy is really not in anyone's backyard. They're landlocked by a river. We are in the community. Whatever you repurpose our school with is our literal neighbor. It's like someone moving in next to you. So if you're going to put a community college, that's a great repurpose. But then we have to deal with students that are just after high school, who are hanging out there and there's other components to that. Maybe you'll put another river on, but what does that mean for our community? Do you also realize how much we use that facility? Our baseball teams rely on that to play baseball. And I dare any of you to go find a field in this community to go play a baseball game because they are completely locked down. You're taking away our entire T-belt ball program for our community. Did you know that? Did you know you're taking away adult rec basketball? Do you know that Brownies meet in there? Did you have any inkling of it is our community? It's not in our community, it is our community. And I find it disappointing that we throw it out the window and that we don't consider having Amity Elementary, which is the largest school, and Birdsborough open. Why are we completely disregarding that plan? We do work really hard on Borough Council to improve that school. And quite honestly, I feel like it's a slap in the face that this is now just being approached and in two weeks you have to make an educated decision that's going to impact our community hard. Whether to repurpose or whether to lock the doors, the bottom line is that facility still has to be paid for for repairs and maintenance. Why are we discounting it as being used as the second school? Because that doesn't feel like we are part of the community. I don't know of too many other municipalities, in fact, I don't think there are any, like Joe Peterson, that adds our population level with no school in municipality.
There are none in the state of Pennsylvania.
There are none in the state of Pennsylvania and we're going to be the first. We're going to be the first to be left out. That's going to be our logic. Birdsborough, the first to be left out of our school district. What does that mean as a legacy? I get that we want sound education and I can see some really great components to this plan, but I really wish that someone had just knocked on our door. Because now you're saying to me, you're not going to close my door, the door to my elementary school down the street for me, Cindy. We're not going to close it next year, which you might as well have. Because one year from now, two years from now, three years from now, it still impacts our community. Are we really only looking three years ahead? Shouldn't we be looking 10 years ahead? Then we might not have built monocracy elementary. And as far as our building numbers are concerned, I think that Mr. Rathgat has a great point. They gave us the numbers that we were going to have a boom and we need to absolutely build a building. Now they're like, oh, you know, all these housing starts that are just playing around are never going to be used to increase capacity in our school district.
Mr. McGee, can you wrap up your comments, please?
I would just like to say that I don't know why we weren't given that consideration. I don't know why we weren't talked to. I don't know why the value of our community wasn't even begun to be evaluated before this presentation came out and why it was the last item on the agenda to even be discussed. So the public's not even here to listen to it. I just wanted that to be disappointed.
Austin Peterson, 217 South Street Street, Birdsborough. I just, as the presentation went on and the board brought up some questions, I just wanted to remind you of some of your questions that I thought were, were very sound. Mr. Rathgat, you asked if it would be beneficial to relook at the enrollment projections. I personally feel that that would be beneficial to look at those projections again before we move ahead. Also along those lines, I'd be curious to what the kindergarten projection versus actual has been in recent history. I know I didn't get an enrollment packet for my daughter, even though I've lived in my house 10 years, my daughter never lived anywhere else. And I know several of my neighbors have had to experience the same thing. So I'm wondering if come June, July, August, if there's going to be a big push of new We were looking at this and, you know, would this plan, would it allow for us to pick up programs that other districts, other neighboring districts have? We look at, Exeter has dual grade or multi-age classrooms that are, that are very successful. If the push for pre-kindergarten continues, that would also, are we going to be able to absorb that? And if we wanted to go to a full, full day program for kindergarten, would there be capacity for that? I mean, we're looking at the Birdsborough, if we repurpose the building, that's great, but it looks like we're still going to be on the hook for the $3.4 million in renovations there. You know, so that, that cost is not avoided. What it all boils down to is, is I got the impression from some of you that this does feel a little bit rushed and maybe two weeks is, is a little rushed. And I ask that you really look deeply into this and as you are privy to more information and so forth, that could be beneficial. If any type of plan like this would be, would be carried out and moved, they would move it forward, I would really ask that, that any savings be used to restore programs that have been cut or institute new programs that would be beneficial to our students so that we're keeping up with the challenges that are surrounding us. Two other odd notes when we're talking about the heroin vaccine. It's one of those things, I don't think we need to overthink it. If we can save someone's life and the risk is someone's going to assault you, I'll take a punch in the face any day to give someone a heroin vaccine. That seems like a no brainer to me. And also I just am curious to why staffing recommendations are coming from the financial committee as opposed to coming from the curriculum committee or administration? It seems like the tail's wagging the dog there a little bit where mandates are being levied on administration or, or others and then it being told, well, here's where the drive is coming from, where it would make much more sense for me if it's coming from curriculum or from administration after looking at the numbers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'd just say as Chair of the Curriculum Committee, we work with the policy with our class sizes and the number is what's set by policy. It's just, again, taking what policy says and applying it to what actuality is, it's just the numbers. But if we want to look at policy and we have looked at policy recently.
I think we're talking about staffing.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about too.
Well, I understand, but I sort of see it as an agenda item on the financial committee where, and I often hear it from the financial committee that, you know, we can look at cutting, we can look at cutting, where I feel like that should be coming from administration or curriculum as opposed to being driven the other way. Thank you.
Mr. Kurtz, as I recall, last year, didn't finance send recommendations and we discussed it in curriculum, when curriculum sent their recommendations and the board actually voted on two separate?
We did do that, you know.
There will be deliberation on both.
I get it. It just feels like the tail's wagging the dog there as opposed to the other way around.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Joe Peterson. I'm the mayor of, sorry, it is the one I think, isn't it?
No, it has to be red.
That has to be red.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Joe Peterson, I'm the mayor of Birdsborough, greatest borough of the state of Pennsylvania. Really think it's probably the state of Pennsylvania. My real job though is I'm a real estate broker and I have a few clients in the room here, past clients, you know, in the room. And I've been doing that, been a real estate broker for 40 years in this area and I tend to know what's happening in the real estate market. I would say Daniel Boone better than anyone else. And I'd like to give you a little bit of information relative to that because I believe there, I really hope your projections are way off. It is the long and short. In fact, I know they're way off and I'm going to prove that to you here in a couple of seconds. We just went through the longest recessionary period in the history of our country. It exceeded the time period during the Great Depression. You know, the real estate market for the first time in our lifetimes, you know, took a hit. That is rebounding now. Are we back to the heights that we were, you know, in 2005, 2006, 2007? You know, we have not been there, but we are getting our way back. The first quarter of 2016 in Berks County, there were 2,006 transaction sites in Berks County. The first quarter is generally the slowest quarter, represents usually 20% of the business that you're going to do during the year. That's the highest quarter since the third quarter of 2007, which was the third busiest year in the history of real estate in our county. It was a 12% increase for the same time period versus 2015. Improvements being made. Nearly 60% of the transactions during the first quarter of this year, the sellers had more than one buyer to decide from. Almost 20% of those transactions were for greater than the asking price because of that competition. Talk a little bit about available, available inventory in the Daniel Boone School District. Mr. Thompson said there's a lot of developable ground in Berks County. You're really right. Today, there are more than 200 approved and improved building sites, building lots in the Daniel Boone School District. What that means are the streets, the curves, the utilities, the street lights are in and they are shovel ready to be built on. Over, there are over 2,000 approved home sites, which would give the answer to why no one's coming and asking for new subdivisions in Amity Township. When you have 2,000 available home sites now, why are you putting another 300 or 400 on the books? There's absorption that needs to take place first.
Mr. Peterson, can you wrap up your comments?
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Just to let you know how that affects, 2,000 home sites, there's 1,854 homes in the entire borough, Birdsborough. That gives you an idea of what that is. In our business, we talk about multipliers per household. That multipliers 3.18. Now you can make a reasonable assumption, there's two adults in those households. That means 1.18. If we just say the 200 lots that are available now multiplied by that, that's 236 new students. If we project it out over the 2,000 lots that are available, that's 2,360. Maybe we did overbuild a little bit during our last boom market as a reaction to one of the five fastest growing school districts in the state of Pennsylvania at the time. Closing buildings now would be the same type of reaction in reverse as what was done at that time. Muleburg Schools did the same thing in the 1980s by closing and selling four buildings. They actually had to give one away. Mr. Thompson, I'm sure I can tell you that in some instances, when you attempt to repurpose, there's actually a negative value because the cost to raise a building ends up being more than what the land, residual land that's left over is worth. They had to give one of those buildings away only to have to spend over $40 million to renovate, expand and build new buildings just seven years later. They had the same pessimistic impressions that you are looking at here tonight. The future of the housing in the Daniel Boone School area is very bright. We talk about game changers in our business. The first game changer we had in our district was the opening of 422 bypass. And I think you'd all would agree, that was a game changer.
Mr. Peterson?
I have, please. I just have two quick things I ask for one minute. I'd ask for one minute, please. Plans have already been prepared for a train, a train station, a passenger station that could handle rail service from Reading to Philadelphia to be built in Douglasville. Those plans have been on the books for nearly 10 years. Can you imagine the impact that would have on our area if that takes place? That would make the 422 bypass look simple. In conclusion, President Wolf, I'd like to ask you for one thing, being the mayor of Birdsborough. Since the Birdsborough community is impacted the most by this decision that apparently is going to be made in two weeks, I ask for that meeting to be held at the Birdsborough Elementary Center. Thank you.
Amy Swann and I, Dr. Future, at Douglasville. I've got pages and pages of notes here and I don't want to reiterate everything that everyone's already said. A lot of this plan is educationally sound and I appreciate the discussion that's available today. I guess my concern is, given the commentary, why the urgency to decide this in two weeks? Like this might be a conversation that would be worthy of having over the course of next year. As we're sitting here and talking amongst ourselves, there's red flags that we're seeing and was this considered and was this considered? And we don't know. Maybe it was, but maybe it wasn't. For example, when you discuss building capacity at the elementary level, Mr. Thompson, there are services at the elementary level that don't give fully capacity. Now, we haven't had a chance to study those figures you have up there, but where would the gifted class go? The OTPT vision psychologists? Like I'm looking at an AEC over here and it just doesn't seem like there's space. Perhaps there is, but we're not currently seeing it and that would be a major concern. You've mentioned class sizes pretty frequently and Mr. Wolf, you said that you would not vote to raise class sizes above your projected numbers. Yet at AEC this year, all the fourth grade classes are above your projection. So that falls flat when I hear that. Title one, when we group our students demographically by building, we get title one money. Would that be shifted if we shift our demographics? I know that was one of the reasons why we realigned the buildings the way we just did. To reverse that, will we lose that funding? Given the discussion with the heroin issue, you discussed savings of a nurse. You know how difficult it is for us to get nurses. We're constantly understaffed with nursing. Eliminating that sounds like a red flag. Foreign languages, you're talking about bringing that on, middle school foreign language program. Was that going to be just an online course or would that be, would there be room for that? I love the idea that someone had mentioned about forming a committee. Maybe all these concerns, including staff, administration, principals, community, could make this a worthy discussion, not for the next two weeks, but maybe take a little bit more time.
Just, just for the record, I'll defend myself, I voted against that last year.
I appreciate that vote, yes. But again, like when, when you look at crowding the buildings with not a lot of wiggle room... But again, like, when, when you look at crowding the buildings with not a lot of wiggle room, it's a scary, it's a scary thought. While there's a lot of benefit that's been mentioned and I, I see that and appreciate that, it, it's also a little scary and I think the concerns for the members of Burnsborough are worthy of being heard.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing. This is not Mr. Thompson's plan. The board hired Mr. Thompson to do a feasibility building study. The plan that I presented is from the administration. We were, we were aware that he was doing the study and it made us look internally and look at what we had to work with. So, just by chance, when he came back to my office to present his findings, we said, "Look what we have." And he goes, "Oh, that's a pretty good idea." So, we worked separately, but came up with the same solution. None of us called him and said, "Hey, we're working on this, we'd like to show you something." We saw his presentation at the high school for the first time together and we went back and worked on things on our own, what, what would help the district academically. And like I said, we're not saving 10, 20, 30 million dollars here. The savings are a half million dollars, but the benefit is academically and that's what we're looking to do. The repurposing of Burnsborough, like I said, we're not going to put two-by-fours or panels over the windows and close it. There is going to be an academic purpose for that building. So, we're looking at a number of things and a lot of the things that came from the union representative, we're looking at. This has not been a rushed program at all. And once again, if the board said, "Wait a year," then everything gets moved back a year. But in the end, unless something goes to stem the tide of our declining enrollment, something has to be done. Now, there are options. Mr. Thompson showed four of them. We probably had 24 privately as we discussed. We are trying to do the best for our students with the least amount of disruption possible and to bring in programming. I mean, the foreign language program, discussed it with the foreign language group at the high school today. There's other program that we're looking to do and we're not basing it off of the savings of closing Burnsborough, not at all. We have RFPs out for supportive service, solicitor, transportation. Last year, nutrition service was outsourced. We're looking at a number of ways to use your tax dollars in the most efficient manner Next, my neighbor.
Um, I'm not here to discuss the educational thing. I don't know if it's good, I don't know if it's bad. I just want to give a quick pressure. I've lived here for 10 years. In that time, we had Monocacy Kindergarten Center. It closed. We opened Monocacy Elementary Center and phased it in with each class. We then redistricted. We split families up because you had a kindergartner at Monocacy, a fourth grader at AEC and they had the same start times and it sent everybody into a frenzy. Then we closed APC and moved the APC students all to Monocacy for a year to redo this building. Then we opened the APC back up, brought everybody back. We were here, what, a year or two? Then we closed APC again. Then we took BEC and Monocacy and reconfigured that. That's in 10 years that we've moved people around five, six times. Whenever you decide, look at the long term so that in two years, we're not up here again going, "Oh, well now we need to close this building, move these people," but we just opened that building. We need to really make sure we look at it and make sure it's the best thing for the kids because some consistency would be really nice.
I think when you look at what we've done with Mr. Thompson's study, the reserve study of our buildings, it, it, everything we're trying to do is, out of the information Mr. Thompson was able to take the, the building study with the reserve study, he's given us some hard numbers for our budget in addition to, you know, what we're talking about. So, we're trying to do everything we can with the information we have today to make the best decision going forward. Now, as I've said before, you know, there, there may be different plans, we may have different opinions, but it's going to be up to nine individuals to decide, you know, what we're going to do based on that information. So, we're trying to do everything we can to educate ourselves in order to make a better decision.
Jennifer Harding, 103 Boston Drive. I'm a PTC board member and this plan from that point of view would be...
Can you touch your microphone, please?
I'm a PTC board member and this plan from that point of view would be pretty good for certain programs to be run like art goes to school and stuff because all the grade levels would be, would be together and we wouldn't be going, "Okay, we're going to have this program here and then this program here and setting it up with different places." From a parent point of view, probably a little hectic. One kid's here, one kid's there. Where are things going? I almost went transphobic. Hello? Thank you.
Hi, it's Steve Miller, 600 Richard Drive, Douglasville. Just sitting back and listening to this, it seems like this is a very good decision that's going to be rushed in two weeks. Really hope you take your time and you can do diligence that I think that it needs. But I did have a lot of questions to ask and I, as most of you are aware, I would like to see some of the programs that have kind of the last 10 years we've brought back, especially the full-day kindergarten. So, making sure that the building space is available for full-day kindergarten for some of the other programs like middle school, foreign languages are really important to the district and making sure that we have, that the numbers laid out there, we can accommodate that if you choose to. I did have one other question about the, I saw the survey monkey for the Mandarin Chinese and I think that's a great tool that we should use more often, but is that just to bring back Chinese into middle school before we bring back French, Spanish, German? And those were big cuts that we took out of the middle school.
The Mandarin Chinese class I found and Mr. Ringnight kind of alluded to is through the IU. They, first, they have a StarTalk camp and I was looking for a camp for my son, honestly, and it wasn't advertised yet, so I contacted them and said, "Are you going to have this camp again? It's pretty, looks pretty interesting." And they said, "Just by chance, we just have funding. It's by the, what, Department of Defense or something helps fund it."
NSA.
NSA, top secret camp. And I said, "Great." Like I said, I'm a parent here also in the district. In talking to them, they said, "Well, we also offer programs that different schools around the area are using." I said, "Well, what is it?" They said, "Well, we have a virtual, you know, class." Where I went to their studios at the IU, it's pretty cool, they have big screen TVs, computers set up and they bring in Mandarin language speakers into the country, they sponsor them and they teach the class. Well, seems to be doing it, a number of other schools are doing it. I said, "Great, what a great opportunity, let's bring it to the high school." Because I think everything goes to the high school, as people will tell you. Well, meeting with the principals and other folks, they said, "You know what? We don't have languages at the middle school and this would be great for the eighth graders to start off with this, the high-level readers who are in the, in the eighth grade, to bring this up into the high school. Let's start it at a different level and work with them." Okay, well, let's, and Preston said, "Mr. Ringnight, so let's do a survey." And we put together a survey to check the interest, because I'm not, I don't want to force anything on anyone. If there's an interest, great, if not, next idea. Well, there seems to be an interest, I met today, met with the foreign language group at the high school and they made me aware, they showed me a timeline from 1998 on, things that have been cut, and, and I said, "We have to look forward." So, if I could bring in a program that I want my son to go to for other students and it's $5,000 to bring in a fully accredited language course into the middle school that we don't have right now and to give opportunities to our students is what I want to do. And if we could take that eighth grade class, bring it up to the ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, the program said they would work with us, whatever we need. They said, "It's so exciting, sometimes a teacher who is, is in the room with them takes the class with them." So, if that's a start and getting the conversation about languages, because I guarantee you, if we were bringing Spanish back, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now, but the Mandarin Chinese language and Farsi and those other things, those are objects of concern and people are interested in them and we can bring those things back. And meeting with the, the class, the group of teachers today, they mentioned a kind of a potpourri of languages that together we could possibly do in a, in the next year or so. So, we're looking at bringing back programming. I'm not looking to bring back 1998. I would like to have less gray hair from 1998, but it is what it is right now. But if we could bring back programming, reduce some of the activity fees, the parking fees, these are all things that are on our plate, that we're trying to make, once again, Daniel Boone a go-to district. So, if Mandarin Chinese were $5,000 a year that the other districts were doing on our bell schedule for our students, bring it into the middle school, I think it's a great opportunity. And if that conversation goes, "Why don't we have more languages in Port at the middle school?", then we could bring in Spanish and French and German and start it again. But we have to have the resources educationally, academically and financially to do those things.
Okay, yeah, no, I think, man, it's a great idea. I do think this foreign language is a little school, it's a big loss. And if some others that have gone through the Daniel Boone School District were able to take, then my, my oldest could, my youngest cannot, I mean, it's a whole, an education.
But can I just make a comment from my perspective? We hear a lot about what was cut and we want to bring it back and for me personally, I, I think I want to bring more opportunities to the students and we want to grow the curriculum and add program, but I don't know that we necessarily need to bring back everything we cut. And when I was in school, they call it shorthand, they call it, you know, it's like, "Those things have all been cut, would anybody recommend bringing them back? No." So, I don't know that, when people say, "Well, I want to bring back what was cut," if we're providing new programs or new opportunities that are exciting for the students as well, do we really necessarily need to bring back everything we cut if we're bringing back new program? That's, that's my thought.
I agree. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Have we had an executive session?
I think if we can pick back off that, I think, when, when I think of bringing back programs, I think of the elementary level, the special time. When I moved here, my son had 45-minute art and music classes, he had the opportunities to be in band and chorus. Those are the things that I think that I'm thinking about, not shorthand and typewriting. You know, like, those aren't what I'm thinking about. When I talk to my friends, I'm in my mid-30s, I have friends in my early 20s, mid-30s, when I say, "Douglasville, I, next year, I'm going to have a senior in high school and a kindergartner," just to give you a little perspective. I absolutely love, Zachary got a wonderful education through the Daniel Boone School District. I am so pleased with it. I tell my friends that and their response is, "We'll hide taxes and you cut everything." That's, that's the reputation that our district has. So, I think that if we show them that we're building up and like with the full-day kindergarten and bringing back 45-minute specials, little things like that add value to education and at least to citizens, like, we, we take that into account. And it hurts, it, well, doesn't, it bothers me that my friends say, "Oh, well, everything's cut, you have to hide taxes." Well, I don't mind paying my taxes because I've had such a great experience here. All the teachers have been wonderful, the relationships that they've built, built with my son. He still goes back and visits the middle school and elementary schools. It's, and that's what matters, is the relationships and, and the character that our students leave with. So, I think that that's what we have to keep in mind, not the capacity and, you know, trying to fill the school up to the brim. I think that, that's just what I have to say. And everything else, everyone said, "I think just take your time, it's a big decision." I got T R U I listening to the Burnsborough people, that really touched my heart. We are a community, especially with the tragedy that's just happened. And I think we need to stick together, that's all.
Thank you. Ms., you already had your opportunity to speak.
I can't go again.
No, I'm sorry.
Even though I remember what it was?
You can give 30 seconds, please.
Okay, it's on kindergarten. I have a kindergarten, I'm in there, two times a week volunteering. I sit at the table with five other kids. It's really hard to get a kindergarten parent's attention when they're writing. There's me, the teacher and me. If he's even in there, it's usually out of the classroom doing, working with the other students to assess them because teacher can assess them to make sure they're on track. It's really hard. We either need parent volunteers or more reads. Something has to be done for smaller classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
President Wolf, can we meet in Burnsborough in two weeks? What's, what's the board's thought in meeting in Burnsborough? I think some things you can do. Sorry?
Where, where are they going to meet? Where would you...
The elementary center.
It's still open. No, but where in the, I'm asking where in the elementary center? I understand. And it would be more convenient for me because it's two minutes from home. I'm asking where in the building and where we have enough room, we have all this, what we need, right?
And I, I don't know if I speak for everybody in the board, but I'm pretty sure that at least half of us asked the administration about delaying the kindergarten...
Correct.
...orientations so that we could have more time to just gather facts and just to understand. So, I completely get the whole concept of rush. I think, again, half of us made that point when we were having our discussions, so I don't want to discount what anybody's saying, but I, I, at least for myself, I don't want to make a rushed decision. So, anyway, that's all I would say.
We have to make that...
No, I don't think we have to make a decision now, I mean, we have to make, obviously, if there's a, if it's available, first of all, if it's, if we can actually have a productive meeting there. So, what we're going to get back to with, with the decision, what we're going to do. When can we expect that? As soon as we, as soon as we make it, you'll be the second one to know. I'm not going to... Things the sooner the better. I understand. And, and that's truly, I, I mean, honestly, I see the train running here, folks. It, it doesn't make, you know, a rocket scientist here, the train, the train's on the track and it's rolling. And, you know, I said, "No, borough managers here, this doesn't, this doesn't..."
All right. I had one great thing that, I was asked to survey this announcement, we're all aware of the tragic suicide we had at the high school and, you know, frankly, the rather brave conversation parents had in the paper, which a lot of times suicide is not, is kind of not talked about, but St. Louis, we're in on May 15th, we'll be having a suicide awareness lecture and Q and A and it's from 9:15 in the morning to 10:15. Again, that's Sunday, May 15th, so the, the whole, the holidays invited to come down to that, so.
Thank you. Please do it, Jared.
Second.
Stand with Jared.